I don't even have to do it very loud tonight. Good evening, excuse me, and welcome to the December 12th School Board meeting this evening. What I would... Madam Clerk, can you hold the board, please?
Yes, and Mr. Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hyrens.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Next, I would like for us to rise for our Color Guard presentation and for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hyrens, will you lead us, please?
Colors. Hold. Left face. March. Colors. Hold. Aerial. Colors. Ready, cut. Present. Colors.
You join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Aerial. Colors. Ready, cut. Order. Charge. Ready, cut. Right face. March. Forward. March.
Thank you. Be seated. our colors tonight with Cadet Benton King. This evening, we had Cadet Benton King, Cadet Walter Elias, Cadet Isaac Iglesias, and Cadet Zachary Grayson. And our program is led by Captain James O'Keefe and Petty Officer Michael Tucci. It's always great to have our JROTC programs here this evening. I'd like to welcome you and thank you all for coming this evening. So, the next item on our agenda will be the approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments, changes, edits, or deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our agenda is approved. All right. One of our favorite things we get to do tonight is our presentation of awards. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Robin Lloyd, Principal of T. Benton Gale Middle School, for the presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. It is a distinct pleasure to introduce to you Nathan Sekinger, the Virginia State Librarian of the Year. Mr. Sekinger is the librarian at T. Benton Gale Middle School, where he has transformed the library into an innovative learning space to challenge and motivate his students to figure things out for themselves. When you step into the library, Gil, you're not quite sure where you are, but I do know what you will see. PVC pipes, circuit boards, disassembled computers, duct tape, cardboard boxes, and hydrophonic plants. Using these tools, Mr. Sekinger challenges his students to define and research a problem and then solve the problem. He asks more questions than he answers, and then solve that problem with the students' help. Consider for a moment what it must be like to learn in this environment with a teacher like Mr. Sekinger. He gets them, he values their contributions, he makes them think, he celebrates their successes. He believes there is little they cannot accomplish if they try. In addition, Mr. Sekinger is a valued colleague among Stafford librarians. In fact, many of them are here tonight to join us in congratulating him on this well-deserved and very distinguished honor as Virginia State Librarian of the Year, Nathan Sekinger.
Come on down. (laughter)
No.
Congratulations.[402.12][402.12](applause) Next up, I would like to ask Anna Marie Bellino, our facilitator for Fine and Performing Arts, for presentation of awards.
Good evening. Hi, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Benson. It's my pleasure to recognize several of our music students who've received some state recognition. So, we're going to start by recognizing three terrific jazz musicians from our school division. This past fall, the students competed against hundreds of other high school students from across the state and were selected for the 2017 VMEA, the Virginia Music Educators Association, All-Virginia Jazz Ensemble. I would also like to invite their directors to come forward to help present awards, so would love to bring forward Rob Gillette, the band director at Colonial Forge, and Eddie Steenstra, the band director at Stafford High School. So, gentlemen, if you'll join me. And students, as I call your name, please come forward. Kyle Smith, who is a percussionist, a terrific drum set player at Colonial Forge High School; Davis Smith, who squeals on the trumpet from Stafford High School; and Adrian Avalar, who is a trombonist from Stafford High School, who had a really terrific solo at the concert. So, would you all please join me in congratulating these students?[488.81][488.81](applause) Mr. Gillette and Mr. Steenstra, you are being summoned to the front, please.[503.81][503.81](laughter) You would think they were shy or something.
Musicians.
These talented and hard-working singers auditioned among hundreds of high school seniors from across the Commonwealth and were selected for the 2017 VMEA Honors Choir. And this group is made up of just seniors, so it's really quite special and quite a level of excellence, as you can imagine. So, these amazing accomplishments would not be possible again without our extraordinary teachers. So, I would like to invite Barbara Perry, Benita Keane, and Joe Eveler forward to help me present the recognitions. Barbara is the choir director at Colonial Forge, and she's also receiving a 25-year pin for her service at Stafford tonight. Benita Keane is at Mountain View, and Joe Eveler is at Stafford. Students, as I call your name, please come forward. From Colonial Forge High School, Kayla Rush and Marcus Lopez. From Mountain View High School, Catherine Crowell and Thomas Bush. Thank you, as always, for allowing us the opportunity to recognize these fabulous teachers and students.
Thank you.[648.91][648.91](applause) You know, just like a choir, exactly. Thank you. I always wonder if we should have the musicians sing their awards or have that for us, because you know you don't want me singing, I will tell you that. Next, I would like to recognize Ms. Cherie Johnson, our Director of Strategic Communications and Community Engagement, for our presentation of our wonderful awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. It is my pleasure to announce the employees that have provided anywhere from 25 to 40 years of service to Stafford County Public Schools. These are employees representing all areas of service in the division, and tonight, we say thank you for all that you have accomplished and all that you will continue to accomplish in the future. We will announce the employees in categories of years with 25, 30, 35, and 40, and take a picture of each group. At this time, I would like to ask each of our employees with 25 years of service to please come forward as we present the service pins. Barbara Perry, Colonial Forge High School. Diane Holland, Conway Elementary School. Susan Bowler, Ferry Farm Elementary School. Amy McRae, Rocky Run Elementary School. Karen Kitchens, Shirley High Middle School. Kristen McKinney Nash, Wide Water Elementary School. We've now moved on to 30 years of service, and Deborah Reep was 30 years of service.
Thank you.
25 years. Good job.
Continuing on with our 30 years of service, Sheila Speed, Rock Hill Elementary School. And now, for 35 years of service, Constance Engelhardt, Dixon Smith Middle School. She's the only one for 35. Okay. Okay? Yeah, just one. Yeah. Just one. And last but not least, 40 years of service, Mr. Thomas Harris, Garrisonville Elementary
Art, art.
And what do you teach?
Art.
Art? He teaches art. Okay. Stand by, stand by, we have one more.
Hi, Mr. Harris.
And finally, we have Mary Grace McGraw, Shirley High Middle School.[1155.08][1155.08](applause) He's principal.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you to all of the employees for their service to SCPS.
I know that Mr. Andy Hayes is in the audience for his 30 years. So, Andy, I know you're here. So, for your 30 years, I would like to make sure that you come forward and get your pin as well. Andrew Hayes, 30 years of service.[1240.16][1240.16](applause) Well, there's no way to more congratulate all of our wonderful employees and their service. Thank you so much for coming, and especially for those who brought their families, who brought them forward. It made it a special evening for you to bring your family, to bring to your Stafford County Public Schools family. So, next on our agenda is we start to recognize part of our family up here on the School Board. And we wanted to start off with, I'm going to have Ms. Decatur start us off with. Mr. Connolly will be leaving us for, I don't know if I want to say greener pastures or all your day job and all the other good things that you have, but we did want to thank you for accepting this challenging role. But I'm going to have Ms. Decatur read something, and then, Board members, if you want to make any additional comments at the end, we'll do that, and then, we'll move on to our next recognition.
Yes, ma'am. I'm happy to. This is a resolution to recognize Christopher P. Connolly's contributions to Stafford County Public Schools. Whereas, Christopher P. Connolly was appointed as the School Board Representative for the Garrisonville District in December 2016, and whereas, Mr. Connolly served on the Legislative and Finance and Budget Standing Committees during his tenure on the School Board; whereas, Mr. Connolly joined the School Board during a challenging time that involved high school and elementary school redistricting efforts; whereas, Mr. Connolly provided insight and analysis using his expertise in federal and state matters, and as a parent of four students in Stafford County Public Schools. Whereas, the job of a School Board member is not for the faint of heart, and Stafford County Public Schools has been fortunate to have Mr. Connolly serve as the Garrisonville School Board Member for the past year. Whereas, the School Division conveys to Mr. Connolly our utmost appreciation for the work that he has done in supportive education in Stafford County, and whereas, the School Division hopes that Mr. Connolly will remain an involved parent and Stafford County citizen continuing to advocate for the students and staff of Stafford County Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board and the Division express profound gratitude to Christopher P. Connolly for his dedication to Stafford County Public Schools, its students and staff, and the community at large, and wish him well in all future endeavors, and, further, that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded within the minutes of Stafford County School Board, adopted by the Stafford County School Board this 12th day of December 2017.
Thank you very much. I don't know, are there any additional Board member comments? Or Jamie, would you like to start?
I'll hop right in there and just add that whereas, Mr. Connolly joined the School Board during a challenging time that involved high school and elementary school redistricting efforts, I'll second that. I joined the School Board with him, and I know that it wasn't easy jumping into all of that, but I certainly do appreciate that you did, and I appreciated learning with you and going through this entire process, being newbies together this last year. So, thank you, and you will be greatly missed.
Anyone else? Ms. Egan?
Chris, thank you for serving with us for the past year. Wish you could've stayed a little longer, but anytime we can do anything for you, you know we're just a phone call away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I want to thank you, too. I think everyone here has something special to give, and I've learned a lot from you. And I will consider you a resource, even though you're not officially sitting here. We've got your number, but thank you for everything.
Sure. Chris, I'm going to miss you. You came on in a hard time, as Mr. Decatur said. You know, your candor, your commitment, and your professionalism, and especially, you know, your steadfast dedication to your constituents in the Garrisonville District. You know, we're going to remember you a long time. You can always come back and rerun for a seat one of these years. And hopefully, I know you won't, so (laughter) I know you won't, because, you know, it is a, it's a large time commitment. People, I guess folks don't realize it's a large time commitment. You know, you struggled to get down here to make every meeting, to fight for your constituents, and that, you know, I'm very proud to say that hopefully, you know, you're my friend, and you'll stay that way once you leave the Board, and we'll call you up when we need you. So, good luck, Godspeed, Merry Christmas to you and your family, and it's going to be nice to get back to seeing your kids a little bit more, and your wife. So, God bless.
Chris, I just want to say congratulations, sucker.[1561.00][1561.00](laughter) I'm awful glad that you answered emails, and early on, when Annette announced that she was going to be departing us, you know, there was one person I thought of that would be a real asset to this Board, and you have been. It's probably the better way to serve, to be able to get your feet wet and see if it's all that's cracked up to be. But you have served us well, and like Ms. Healy said, yeah, we have, they have your phone number. They have your phone number, and I believe you now have become the School Board lobbyist for it.[1593.83][1593.83](laughter) So, I appreciate it, and you're a good friend and a good colleague up here on the Board. I appreciate your service.
Dr. Benson, anything? I can close it out. Do you have any comment?
Yeah, I just want to echo the comments that have been made by Board members. We really appreciate your participation on the Board. Mr. Connolly, it's been a pleasure. We've dealt with some challenging issues during the past year, and I very much appreciate your perspective and focused on, focus on your data to help support whatever it is that we're trying to move forward as an effort to improve in the Division. So, thank you very much.
I get to close it out. Chris, thank you again, like we said, for heeding the call, being in office during challenging times, and I will say, whether it's redistricting or not, most of us can consider almost every issue, because every issue before us involves a student, a child, somebody that has a parent and a guardian who, you know, their world is that child, so every decision we make impacts them. So, many times, they are emotional issues, and I appreciate your ability to many times look at something and try and help us take the emotion out of it and ask those, okay, what does the data say? How does this fit? Let's look at public policy. And I really appreciated that. I appreciate also your humor. You and I have some similar humor. So, I, and I think in serving in any roles, that when you are up here, you have to have a sense of humor, because otherwise, sometimes, it is very hard. And so, I would like to just thank you. I hope you will be no stranger. Maybe you may not want to come to Board meetings. It may be more delightful to write.
Public comment.
Yes, there's a public comment. But you can also watch them at home in an easy chair. But I just want you to, I would just like to say, please don't be a stranger. You bring a lot. Having four kids in the school system gives you a unique perspective, also a connection to the staff, also through your family, that I don't, I hope we don't lose that as a citizen. I hope you also will talk with your new Board member of certainly the things that you've learned, but also to, you know, be, you know, a person to represent the things that you've learned here, because you do learn a lot, even in a short amount of time. So, we would like to present you with this plaque for you to, you know, hang on your wall, probably with all other ones, but I hope this one means something.
It does.
I will give you the closeout on this, if you would like.
That's great. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. You know, the fire hose hasn't been turned off yet. Literally, I mean, it's still, it's still is such a lot to absorb and a lot to learn. And I think that that kind of speaks to the size of the job. You know, when I decided not to run, I came to the conclusion that, you know, I can do this, I can get here, and I can vote, and I can contribute, but I don't think I can do it well. I think is what it really came down to, because being here for probably seven, eight months into, I'd say about eight, nine months into it, I probably realized that the magnitude of this job...
of this job. And, you know, I just wanted to speak to the folks here and the folks on TV too, particularly about the board and Dr. Benson and the folks who work on the school system. This is a full-time job. It truly is and that is one of the huge takeaways that I am leaving is that if you're going to do this well and if you're really going to divest the time and the energy to do this, it is a full, it is a full-time job. And I don't think folks realize that. I think that there's a perspective out there that, you know, you come up here and you vote and, you know, you talk in very small one-on-ones throughout the week and come to decisions, but that is not the case at all. This is, this is a deliberative body. It's a legislative body and that was, that really has been left on me this year. So, I just wanted, you know, to say whoever's out there listening that this board is committed and works incredibly hard. So, I learned a lot from you all in doing that and also how you keep professionalism and cordial and friendships even though, you know, sometimes differing opinions. I think that that's a testament to the respect that everyone has for each other. So, I wish that 40 miles up the road, they can learn from how this, how this group works because that, so I really take that away. And the other thing I take away is I, and I say this sincerely, I've had a new respect for teachers. Before I got on the board, I was one of these people who said, yeah, teachers work hard, but the market drives it and, you know, the teachers will come and go and they work hard, but they get their summers off and they get out at 3:00 and I was wrong. I'm going to say that, I'm going to say that in front of anyone who's listening, I was wrong. These teachers are overworked, they're underpaid, they're asked to do things that teachers did not used to be asked to do. These teachers discipline and raise children when they shouldn't have to. These teachers spend more time disciplining kids than they do teaching them. That it's not the fault of teachers, that's the fault of parents. And I've become a new advocate for teachers, I really have, and I have a lot of respect for them and they're being asked to do things that I don't think they should be asked to do. They're not getting paid for it. And I know everyone up here understands that. I mean, I've been in these conversations where we've tried to figure out ways to improve teacher pay. It is incredibly difficult, especially when the budget just isn't there. But I did want to say that, driving, driving here, I just want to say, you know, what I want to leave that with and I want to, I wanted to say that. So, I've said it and thank you again for everyone. I wish I could've given more time, but I honestly don't think it would've been fair to the folks in Garrisonville if I, if I did because I just really don't feel like I have at all and I know Pam does. And so, Pam, I'm here, good luck to you and, you know, you're going to represent us well. So, again, thank you, everyone.
Well, next on our agenda, we will be recognizing Mr. Hirons for his contributions and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Egan. After Ms. Egan concludes, I will have, Mr. Lewis is going to follow you and then I will read something as well and then I'll give board members their opportunity to make additional comments.
A resolution honoring C. Scott Hirons for his service to the students and staff of Stafford County Public Schools. Whereas Scott Hirons began serving Stafford County students, staff and community as the Falmouth District School Board Member on January 1st, 2014 and for the past four years has devoted countless hours to shape policy and procedures impacting the 28,668 students and 3,943 employees of Stafford County Public Schools. And whereas during his four years of service on the school board, Mr. Hirons has taken on leadership roles on the board, been an advocate for public schools, school issues with elected officials and is engaged parent, parent volunteer in the schools where his three sons attend school. And whereas during his tenure on the school board, Mr. Hirons served as Chairman of the Finance and Budget Committee and was an advocate of a transparent and reasoned approach to the School Division's financial and budget procedures. And whereas Mr. Hirons strongly endorsed the purchase and highly successful implementation of a new financial management system as well as the development of financial safeguards within the school system. And whereas Mr. Hirons also served as Chairman of the Three-on-Three Joint Schools Committee with the Board of Supervisors and has been a passionate advocate for the schools with Board of Supervisors members and in open sessions of the Board of Supervisors chambers. And whereas Mr. Hirons consistently challenged his fellow school board members, the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Stafford County with his questions of, what is the level of service that you expect for our students in Stafford County Public Schools? Do the residents of Stafford County want an average school district that meets expectations or do the residents expect a top-notch system that far exceeds expectations? And whereas, as soon as he took the oath of office, Mr. Hirons was instrumental in identifying the need for a new strategic plan for Stafford County Public Schools and he served as one of the school board members on the Strategic Plan Steering Committee which produced a mission-focused strategic plan to guide the School Division for many years to come. And whereas, Mr. Hirons has consistently called for action plans and implementation tracking systems for the Division's Strategic Plan and Shared Services and Efficiency Study Recommendations, which have been implemented by the School Division. And whereas, Mr. Hirons has, was a driving force in drafting and presenting to the school board a resolution designed to make class size reduction a priority for the school board as part of its budget and hiring practices. And this initiative has to date been successfully implemented at the elementary level. And whereas, Mr. Hirons has tirelessly advocated for an optimal education experience for all students, especially the middle-of-the-road students, to ensure that all students are encouraged and permitted to access all programs and classes. And whereas, Mr. Hirons has been an ardent proponent of common sense legislation and regulations impacting public school systems and has worked with parents and elected leaders to ensure continuation of the school-based muffin carts and other food-related activities which allow our community partners, our PTOs, PTAs, to provide additional financial support for our schools. And whereas, Mr. Hirons, due to his role as a parent and the husband of a nurse, has advocated for legislation to require that school nurses be required in every school building and that funding for this requirement be made part of the Commonwealth of Virginia's Standards of Quality for all school divisions in Virginia. And whereas, many times the job of a school board member is considered a thankless job and is not for the faint of heart, Mr. Hirons has fulfilled his duties with a commitment to making Stafford County Public Schools the envy of the Commonwealth of Virginia and has participated in numerous hours of research and analysis designed to ensure that the students of Stafford County will receive the best possible education experience. And whereas, Mr. Hirons has been a constant and dependable presence in Stafford County Public Schools, including the schools located in the Falmouth District, the other schools to which the students of the Falmouth District are assigned and many other schools throughout Stafford County. And whereas, Stafford County Public Schools extends our sincere appreciation for the work that Mr. Hirons has done in supportive education within Stafford County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board and the School Division express their profound gratitude to Mr. C. Scott Hirons for his dedication and unwavering commitment to all of the students and staff of Stafford County Public Schools as well as the Stafford County community generally, as demonstrated by his attendance, leadership, advocacy and actions over the past four years while he served as a school board member for the Falmouth District.
Wow. Does Google Docs allow that many words?
Mr. Lewis, if you would like to come forward.
Thank you. We have a letter and a gift. Dear Mr. Hirons, on behalf of the Stafford High School Indian Tribe Community, I want to thank you for your years of service and dedication, not only to the Indian family, but also to Stafford County. Where there were questions, you sought answers. Where there were concerns, you sought solutions. You trusted the administration to lead, the teachers to teach and the staff to serve. Along with us, you cared about our kids and you cared about us. You serve Stafford County and Stafford High School with an open mind and a warm heart. Once a member of the tribe, you will always be a member of the tribe. Please know that you are always welcome in our midst and while you might not serve in of an official capacity, your guidance and counsel will always be welcomed. Most respectfully, Joseph Lewis, Principal.
I know you'll be leading that cheering section. I have a letter here from Dr. Tammy Hannah that she asked that I read. She is at Longwood University in a teaching capacity with future students. I told her to recruit on behalf of this, but right while she was there to get names and stuff, so she is, sorry she cannot be here tonight, but she wanted me to read this and then I have something for you as well. Dear Dr. Benson and esteemed school board members, Booker T. Washington once stated, "Those who are happiest are those who do the most for others." Tonight, we honor one who has chosen public service as the way he would like to do the most for others. After four years of service, Mr. Hirons has reached the end of his tenure in our School Division. Mr. Hirons has been a dedicated school board representative, supporter and parent in the Drew community for many years. In a greater sense, he has served the broader Stafford community in his school board service with his representation on many committees and at countless meetings. No doubt, those commitments have stolen time and experiences he could've spent with his family many times over. For their sacrifice of time with their husband and father, we also want to acknowledge and thank Heather Hirons and her three sons, Chris, Connor and Max. We appreciate the diligent work Mr. Hirons has accomplished while improving the lives of thousands and thousands of Stafford students, teachers and families. At Drew specifically, Mr. Hirons has championed equity and access. During his time, we've been able to implement a middle school master schedule with more similarities than differences. As a result, there has been a resurgence of our once-forgotten coral program. We have also made many renovations from the state of, from our state-of-the-art library to the resurfaced athletic fields that allow for greater, for safer gameplay of our outdoor sports. He realizes that a successful middle school experience includes classroom, extracurricula and athletic opportunities. In closing, Donald Ramsfeld once commented, "Enjoy your time in public service. It may be one of the most interesting and challenging times of your life." I think Mr. Hirons would definitely agree that his four years have been interesting and challenging and well worth the ride. Thank you for your service, untold hours of sacrifice and for always smiling along the ride. Sincerely, Tammy Hannah and the Drew Community. They said that this was your official, maybe this is to be worn at the, under the lights.
AG Wright.
For some of you who do not know, the AG Wright and Drew Middle School have an under-the-light school, football opportunity. We were not able, I don't know how we didn't get there this year and usually some of us have a little bet when it happens. Ms. Healy and I have enjoyed that over the years.
Last minute.
So, with that, I will turn it over to other board, Ms. Egan, would you like to start?
Yes, please. So, I'm not going to direct this at him, I'm going to direct this at you guys out there. Scott and I both started, we sat here where Pam and Sarah are sitting right now, well, a little closer, four years ago tonight. So, it was, gave us a little flavor of how our four years was going to go. We sat in those seats right there and it was public comment period and we had one frequent commenter come up dressed up in Christmas garb and came in and he walked down a little bit and, oh, there he is, yes. He came down in his Christmas garb and he had his hand in a stocking and Scott and I looked at each other and we were wondering if he was going to pull something out that we needed to take cover for. So, that was, if that was any indication of how the next four years was going to go, yeah. Anyway, Scott, I don't know what to say. You've been an asset to this board. Appreciated the time we spent together. Appreciate your leadership and I just wanted to thank you. Your existence here for me made me a better school board member. So, thank you. You're going to be missed.
Scott, I have to say you've challenged me, which is a good thing. I always appreciate that and as with Chris, I've learned from you, I learned from everybody on this board and I think everyone has something special to give and everyone leaves a special mark and you certainly will. And certainly in our, in the finance arena, you've made an incredible difference and I think you've set us on a track that is a very good track to be on. So, among all your other accomplishments, that's the one that I tend to shy away from because I know where my strengths are. But thank you for everything and we certainly, you know, would want you to stay involved and stay in touch because, you know, people that care are what make the difference here and I know, I know you do. I know the schools care for you, so thank you.
Mr. Conley?
Scott, why don't we just blow this place, go get a drink? No, I learned from you as well. I think you're really solid with public policy. You looked at the policies, you focused on them, you dissected them, just really, you really brought a lot from my year here. And, you know, I know often legislative bodies will, it's kind of like a car that fixes the alignment, but then it starts to drift again. You have a way of just keeping everyone going in the right direction. That was really, especially in larger meetings, just really, just a really good skill and just learned from you and, you know, again, only for a year, but I've known you for a while and just always been impressed and you're going to, you're going to keep doing stuff. It's great, great working with you.
Hi.
Are you speaking for both of you?
Yeah. So, well, I might be. If I tear up, it's not me, it's this thing that's inhabited my body. So, I just wanted to tell a quick story real quick because when I first came on the board, I was like, I don't know, maybe a week in and, you know, you're trying to do all the good things and be all the places and answer all the calls and, but you're not because you haven't learned how to log into your email yet and that wasn't a priority for me, but evidently it should've been because at the time we had like a drill sergeant for clerk. God bless her, she was amazing. I mean, truly, literally. And so, I showed up one evening at a, something, we were feeding people and the drill sergeant harassed me for, for not having checked my email yet a week in and I hope she is too. Love you. But I, but I was a little disheveled because naturally I was just overwhelmed and it caught me off guard and I almost just kind of wanted to run away and here it goes. But you recognized that and sorry, this is not me, this is the child. I'm telling you, it's a madhouse at home. You get it. You understand. All right. But you recognized that and you, you just kind of calmly waited for the dust to settle and then you just stepped in and you were like, hey, it's this app and you just, you know, you log in and you just, your emails pop up on your phone, it's magical. And so anyways, you saved me there because I was then able to report back that my emails had been checked and everything was covered and I have checked every email since then, but it's not about me, it's more about you because that was, you know, one of my first experiences with you as a fellow board member, but you've, you've carried that on. You're constantly just consistent, you know, you recognize where the problems are, you're just, you're calm and collected and you're there to just help. You, you're quiet, but you speak up when you need to, you know, and I've just, I've learned a lot from you where, you know, I tend to speak a little more than I probably should. Sometimes I'll, I'll sit back and I'll recognize that you're just being quiet, you know, and anyways, I've just, I've learned a lot from you and I appreciate having had you in the first year to really learn from. I'll echo, you know, I think that you've helped, you know, really shape a lot of us on the board and make the board better and us as individuals a lot there. And thank you, I don't know what I would've done without you, truly.
Mr. McCaskey?
Scott, I'm tearing up right now. Let me get my water ready. My wife hates that one, by the way. No, Scott, listen, we've been working hard together for four years, four-plus years. I echo the sentiments, Ms. Egan, I mean, you really are a professional. You're a professional school board member, no doubt, and a professional person. You're professional, you work hard, you're focused, you're respectful, you're loyal to your constituents and the students of this county and the employees of this county as well and you care. So, I mean, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big package, you know, coming from Dwayne. And it's true and it really is true. I mean, your accomplishments speak for themselves and we're going to miss you. I'm going to miss you. I want you to enjoy your time looking back on this. I know you're going to go onto other bigger and better things, if I know Scott Hirons, I think I do. So, best of luck in the future. Let me know if we can help you out in any way. And most importantly, you know, you're going to have to And most importantly, you know, you're going to have to find out what you're going to do with all this free time. And I'm sure you have that planned with your three lovely boys and your wife, so all the best, Scott, and it was a good ride.
Dr. Benson, you want to go next?
Okay.
Or do you want me to go next?
I can go.
Okay.
So not too long after my arrival, we had our first report out to the board as to how we were doing with the previous version of the strategic plan, right? And there were dozens of goals, about 168 strategies, and I think we reported out on every one of them. And at the end of that presentation, you said something that has stuck with me like every day since then. And it was, "So what?" What's different because of the things that we were able to accomplish? And so that had a huge impact on what we put into the new strategic plan, right? You know, we've talked about this, if everything is important, then we're really not saying that anything is important. And so having, you know, a plan that is more narrowly focused and outcomes that we are measuring progress toward is a great place for the division to be. And I think that framework will continue to support the division well. I really appreciate your business acumen. That is, that's sometimes hard to get a hold on in a school system. There are parts of what we do that very much need to run like a business. The implementation of the new ERP, which is one of the most complicated things you can do in an organization, putting in a new system, went extremely well with the entire board's support, but it, you know, it has put us in a really different place and the kind of information that we're going to be able to pull to support future effort in this division, it will, it will have long-term impact on where we're able to go as a school system. So I thank you for all of that.
Well, last but not least, Scott, I will miss you. We sat in chairs, not in this particular place together, but across the street when we both began on the planning commission together. Talk about having feeding from the fire hose our first couple of meetings, but it was great to have somebody to say, okay, do you know why they did that and all that? And, you know, whenever you join something and you do it together, you do have a certain bond. Scott and I do not agree on everything. We agree on a lot of stuff, though, and I think we've worked very well together toward, with an N towards Stafford County. Scott, I will really miss your ability to look at something, see different sides of it, and boil it down really quickly. And I will miss, I will miss that. I will miss your guidance and your expertise, but what I really hope for the school division, for the students here, the teachers, the staff, that we don't actually end up losing that, whether you sit up here on this, on this board in that seat or whether you're sitting in the audience coming and speaking to us, like in the, you know, citizen comments or serving on the committees and the many things that we have going on. You have helped put in motion an amazing number of things that we have made a lot of progress on, but progress only keeps going if the body continues to invest in it. And I hope you will remain somebody who will invest in it as parent, citizen, and all the other roles and hats that you wear. I know that you're not, you're not far and I hope you'll continue to bring your expertise. And I will give the floor to you. Actually, I guess I'm supposed to actually give this to you next, but I'm afraid I'll like knock it over, so would you like to go next and then I'll hand you your out?
Yeah. Thank you to everyone who spoke and everyone in the audience, but I do want to recognize one particular person, my wife, Heather. Stand up. This will be her first time in this room, I believe, definitely first time since I've been on the board here. And it's something that all of us experience, sacrifice time with family and it really, you know, public service, especially in this type of capacity where, you know, you have a life outside of here, it's not your full-time job necessarily, although Chris is correct, that it is a full-time job. And that causes a lot of strain, a lot of sacrifice to the family, so to all of your families, I can't thank them enough for allowing you to sit up here and continue to sit up here. But to my wife, Heather, thank you. And to our three boys, who apparently didn't make it, which is fine, they're smart. Christopher, Connor, and Max, thank you to them. Joe, thank you for coming out tonight. If you notice, I do have my Stafford tie on tonight. It was funny, my first year on the board, I asked, my mother-in-law always has big Christmases and she asked us what we want. And I said, Joe, I'd like a tie for each of the schools within the Falmouth District that I could wear when I go to those schools and such. And I think I ended up with all of them. But this kind of became my favorite. I don't know, I just really liked the color, I really liked to get over to the school wearing it and participating in various things there with this tie. So this one will always be very special to me. Thank you for the gifts to Dr. Hannah, who is an exceptional leader there at Drew Middle School. Thank you to her for her nice letter and all the other principals who have been in touch. Thank you to them as well. I did write something up, I'm going to try not to read all the way through it because in my practice, it ran about 25, 30 minutes. Just kidding. This December meeting, we should really try to really take everything off the agenda because these things do kind of take on a life of their own. But I do want to say, you know, serving on the school board, serving the Falmouth District really has been quite a blessing, quite an opportunity. You know, sometimes it's hard, it's like, why do you recognize this guy? He lost an election, so, you know, to a certain extent, the voters said, "We've had enough of you, get out." You know, Stafford County is a community, I look at it as a community, and, you know, I never viewed my Ms. Chase as an opponent, I viewed her as a fellow community member and whose ever ideas resonated the most, you know, that's who ends up here or whatever opportunities. I will say though, and not take anything away from Ms. Chase because I will talk about you in a few minutes, part of like elections and like the electoral success, you got to dedicate time to it. And I focus pretty heavily here on this job. I remember a conversation I had with Dr. Benson a couple of years ago and we were talking about the dynamics of elected school board and how it has an effect on the school division and service on the school board. And one of the things that he said to me that just resonated throughout my time was, "When you are running for your job, you may not always be doing your job." Over the last year, I truly tried to focus doing my job. And I hope it was recognized that I did my job all the way up until probably about 11 o'clock tonight. Wow. Then we have another meeting apparently in December, December's always tough, coming up. So I've dedicated myself to this job and it's something I truly loved and I really had a passion for, right, where I do have a passion for. You know, some of my fellow board members kind of talked about the way things were when we came on board here, things were a little bit of a mess. We had just lost the superintendent, we had an interim superintendent, we're waiting for this new guy to see what he had for us. Fortunately, he interviewed well and he stuck to what, he's done what he said he was going to do. He's really been focused on rebuilding the organization here. I think we have a great senior staff here that are all doing incredible magnificent things to really rebuild this organization, make this organization live up to the potential that it has. So I thank each and every one of you for your dedication to your jobs and your dedication to the students of Stafford County because we are doing exceptional things and I think we're right on the cusp to becoming a really great school division. Of course, that's not to say we haven't had, we didn't meet our fair share of bumps in the road, but we were able to get through them and still accomplish all those things that apparently some guy had some little part in. But there were three things that I'm particularly, I guess, proud of that we accomplished or that we're continually working on. One is class sizes. As it was stated, I started very early on in my tenure to really push on class sizes because I truly believe that the smaller the classroom, the smaller the class size, not necessarily smaller the classroom, the smaller the class size, the more opportunity and the better chance our children have of being successful in their education career. I've carried with me for about a year now, an email that I laminated. It's from a teacher who is a government and history teacher at Drew Middle School. And one of the things she wrote in here, it's Lisa Rollings, who is, I guess I had a teacher at Drew. The paragraph, "For example, at Drew, only 51% of our seventh grader, seventh grade students are reading at grade level. So in a class of 30, I have almost half who need additional intervention and help. It's hard to work and only made harder with each student that is added. Our other grade levels are around 64% reading on grade level." I heard a lot from the teachers and their importance on class sizes, so I am truly proud of what we've been able to accomplish at the elementary school level. I really hope that the board that seated up here in January continues on that and it continues to attack those middle school and high school class sizes with the same vigor that we attacked the elementary school class sizes at. We made a lot of progress, we're doing a lot of good things, Pam, with class scheduling and such, but we can do better. We can keep moving forward on that. Another thing that we, that occupied a lot of my time, which was odd to me, was hungry children. I guess I don't really know, I've never had in my past, obviously not a lot of hunger needs of my own, hunger issues of my own, but it really became a heavy focus on my tenure here from working against overburdening federal regulations. I worked with Congressman Whitman on trying to help, you know, move the ball forward and how we can help as a school board to get rid of some of the federal regulations that were really hurting some of our children and including muffin carts. But we've also, and we're going to hear a report tonight about an initiative that we move forward on to make sure that kids in our schools have a good, healthy lunch opportunity. Some of these kids, and I hope the board again, will continue to fight for the kids, I don't know where their next meal may be coming from, that they know they will always have a good, healthy lunch in our Stafford County public schools. Then the third thing, of course, is that budget and finance thing. That kind of came up on me as well. And I knew I had kind of an interest in it, but it really got thrust on me, it really became my true passion, serving on this board. And we really have made a lot of progress with our budget and our budget process and I think I've said this every year, it's always going to get better and it's always going to be better. I truly think this coming year will continue to be a better process and smoother process. One thing that I thought was undone was a funding process from the board of supervisors. Of course, we talked about back in the spring at our retreat, you know, proposed revenue sharing and a couple of weeks ago, the board supervisors received a presentation of a five-year projection and the model that was used by the county administrator was a shared revenue, shared new revenue model where school, the school system will receive 50% of that amount of new revenue. I truly hope that becomes a part of the FY19 budget. If it does, I'll sleep pretty easy knowing that I did accomplish something up here and that my job was done here. So please keep fighting for that. I do want to say to the teachers, like Chris said, you know, you can't be up here and not grow this incredible passion and incredible respect for the teachers. Sometimes in our votes, it may not always look at it, but the one thing I think that every single school board member, probably throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the nation, thinks of is, how is this vote going to affect teachers? Sometimes it doesn't, what we do doesn't necessarily look like it, but believe me, it truly does and we do think about it at every point. But our teachers here in Stafford County, you guys really are exceptional. You guys bring the soul to our buildings. Without you guys, you know, our buildings would just be this soulless frames of buildings and we'd just be the landlords of those soulless buildings. But you guys bring the heart and soul to our buildings and I truly appreciate what you do. Please take this with a grain of salt to any teachers that are listening out there because it's easy for me to say now because I don't have to weigh all the budget issues and concerns and all the other costs, but I would urge the board to really look to begin this year and in the coming years to be really aggressive on our teacher salaries and all staff for that matter. Because we want to be exceptional, we want to be a leader, and we're not going to get there by being average. Right now, we're targeting to get to the median of the market for most all of our staff, but, you know, kind of focusing on teachers here. Raise that bar, be aggressive about it, set those goals higher. That teacher shortage, it's not out in the future, it's here. Be aggressive, attract the best and brightest right here to Stafford County. So Ms. Chase is going to be coming up here and occupying the seat come January. I could do congratulate her, like I've said. She and I have spoken over the years and a little bit more over the coming time. And one of the things that I'm really comfortable with is, I think I'm pretty good about drawing out the big picture and building organizations. Filling in the details sometimes isn't as interesting to me. I think Ms. Chase is really the right person to be able to do that. She's very detail-oriented and will be able to fill in those details to continue moving the school division forward, so congratulations and enjoy your time up here. Like I've told her though, I'm a resource to her and I'm a resource to all of you. If you ever need to give me a call, an email, text, and by the way, I have each of your cell phone numbers, your text messages, text numbers, and email, so don't change those on me. And I'm not subject to FOIA anymore, so I'll text you all. But thank you, thank you to everyone, thank you to everyone who just listened to me babble on, I tend to do at times like this, but thank you for your work, thank you for your dedication to our students, thank you to my family, thank you to my friends who kind of suckered me into the job as well. Ms. Aberg and I have known each other for, you know, it's been almost, it's been like 21 years now. It's a little scary, isn't it? And when we got to know each other up in Prince William County, I was involved in politics up there and she says, "You really need to come down to Stafford and help us out down there." Somehow I ended up down here, so thank you for dragging your friend Heather down. But really, I can't say thanks enough, so thank you all.
Here, here.
Oh, now you got to show your face so you can get your glamour shot. Yes.
Point of privilege?
Sure. Yes.
So we have one other recognition this evening that is not on the agenda. And board members have spoken this evening about how complex our responsibilities are and the amount of time it takes to, you know, to put into that and, you know, working with, you know, concerns from constituents or, you know, doing homework about some issue that we're struggling with. It is, it is all-consuming and it will take up as much space you will give it. There's another layer to that and that has to do with folks that are in the leadership positions for the board, the board chair position. So I just, we want to recognize Holly this evening as well for her services as chair. And there are things that people see, you know, that go along with the chair position, the preside, presiding over the board meetings, conducting the meetings in accordance with board policy, procedures, and practices, establishing the agendas, ensuring board members have the information that they need in order to make informed decisions, right? Acting as a spokesperson to the public on behalf of the board, providing leadership and maintaining the board's focus and on board's vision and mission. And I think the thing that is really powerful about the way that happens for us is that your colleagues, right, pick you, right? Your colleagues have this vote of confidence in you to provide that level of leadership. And I think that's a really positive place for us to be as a board. Now, and you know, if you've heard Holly speak on behalf of the board, she, well, it's no secret, she likes quotes. Like a lot of them.
I do.
So I have one. And it's, every, every human has four endowments, self-awareness, conscience, independent will and creative imagination. These give us the ultimate freedom, the power to choose, to respond, to change. And that's a quote from Stephen Covey. These four endowments are essential for effective leadership. The board's efficiency, effectiveness and creativity as well as its ability to successfully resolve conflicts and solve problems are connected to the chair's leadership skills and style. Effective board chairs demonstrate the ability to be strategic thinkers, expert facilitators, clear communicators and demonstrate strong interpersonal skills. After all, the art of leadership is really the art of influence. So Ms. Hazard, thank you for serving as our, our chair for the last two years and you know, I'm thinking that you might have an urge to reach out for gavel at some point in the future. And I want to make sure.
No, don't get hurt.
That it's close by.
All right.
Awesome.
Kidding me?
Very good.
Well, I'm just sharing tonight, Michelle.
I think we need to permanently place Holly up in the office here to help everybody.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Benson. It is an honor to be, to serve as your chair. As Ms. Healy knows, it is a lot of work, but good work. And I am very proud of the work that has been done, not only over two years, but over four years. And I know that going forward, we have a lot more work to do, but we're starting from a great place. We have a great group of people, as we've all said, with our different strengths, that it's a wonderful way, we all do work together and I know we all care so deeply about this place and I look forward to where we will be each year as we move further and further up, as we become again and remain the envy of those in the Commonwealth of Virginia that they want to work in Stafford County. Although we are just a small part of it, we really, that is due to the people, that our employees, our staff and our students. And it is a privilege for us to sit up here and do it and it's been a privilege to be your chair, so thank you very much. And on that note, we will get back to our things this evening with our staff reports. We are going to start with our Advanced Placement Program Evaluation Program. And I have Ms. Cale and Dr. Parrish on here, but I believe you will probably have Rebecca probably reporting, but I'll give you the first cut.
Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Benson, tonight, the Office of Assessment, Accountability and Program Evaluation will be reporting out on the Advanced Placement Program Evaluation As in past reports, we have provided you all the guidance document that I would like for you to reference tonight. But I just want to remind the board that we will be providing data regarding the Advanced Placement Program as a whole, but we also will be providing data on the Advanced Placement Programs of Excellence, also known as APPX. So if you have any questions, you will answer them at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So as with the first couple of programs we've looked at, this is part of what we rolled out as a status and process evaluation, so taking a look at kind of where the program stands now with the ultimate goal of then taking us through a, an evaluation readiness process and then ultimately a deeper dive with a comprehensive evaluation. So there are definitely things that I wanted to look into more deeply on this and as we continue to discuss about which direction we're going in, that'll provide some more framework as we dive deeper. So Advanced Placement Programming is probably very familiar to many of us, so it basically is a test-based program that started not long after World War II as a means to both ensure that students had completed a certain amount of college material before they were eligible for the draft and as a way to increase the alignment between secondary and tertiary education systems. So you don't technically have to participate in an AP course in order to sit for the exams, which is a distinction from some of our others. And then we'll be also, as Dr. Parrish mentioned, taking a look at our APPX program, which is unique to Stafford County. So in terms of our methodology, mixed methods approach again, combining quantitative and qualitative methods, this gives you just kind of a sampling of some of the questions that we tried to take a look at. Not all of them were able to be answered, however, we were able to take a look at some of them. One thing I do want to say as we start to dive into this is, and this being the third evaluation and kind of wrapping up the, our first year of going through this process, I really do want to thank the members of the division and stakeholders who have taken the time to help us put this information together. So I have had countless interviews with teachers and administrators and worked with different departments here who have dug through old emails and let me sit through, going through binders and all sorts of other things without which we couldn't put together this information. Parents, students have taken surveys, some of them probably multiple times, and some of these programs have been participated in by multiple families multiple times and so they're probably tired of getting an email from me saying, "Please take another survey on this." But it really has been huge to have that. So diving into our AP programs, one of the things we've looked at with each program is when and how families are learning about our programs in the division. And for AP programming, we see once again that most families are learning about it in middle school. However, it was a smaller number than at some of the other programs we've looked to and we had a higher number of families either learning about it in elementary school or even in high school with 25% of our families not learning about AP programming opportunities until their students started high school. Also very similar to some of the programs we've seen in terms of IB, how families are learning about the programs really varies. And so it's hard to know at this point, and this is something I'd like to see us dive deeper in, it's hard to know at this point how much of this is because we are taking a holistic approach to recruitment or a haphazard approach to recruitment. And so taking a look, deeper look and better understanding how families are learning about the programs and what that signifies for the program. So in terms of finances for the program, what we see is that like, again, like the IB evaluation that we brought about a month ago, a huge chunk of the expenditures we see as a division has to do with our tuition paid, okay? Which as of this past year was $327,108.55. That is largely reimbursed by students and their families. Last year, we had $313,334 of that reimbursed. So there's a slight discrepancy there because we do provide some funding for students who qualify for free and reduced meals or otherwise economically disadvantaged. Our other big category from this past year is with our textbooks and workbooks and that is largely because last year, as a division, we did history and social studies textbook adoption across all, all grade levels. And we have a fairly high number of AP courses in that subject area. So this is not an annual expenditure, but it is a cyclical one based on when we adopt textbooks as a division. Finally, our third biggest category of spending on the program is for our conferences and seminars to provide training for educators before they begin teaching AP coursework or when college board revises the curriculum for them to attend retraining. Which brings us to our AP teachers in SEPS. We saw that about 77% of our teachers who responded to our survey, so it went out to about 99 teachers and we had 39 who participated in the survey, about 77% of them reported attending a training before beginning teaching the AP coursework. We had about 23% who had not attended training prior to attending or prior to beginning AP coursework. So, and in some of the comments, the survey that went to the teachers was largely qualitative and a lot of them spoke to the growth curve they had when they began teaching AP. There were certainly for those who didn't attend training, a lot of them frequently reported feeling overwhelmed in that early period, particularly if they didn't have kind of a peer who had experience with the subject or a mentor who could fill that in. Teachers who felt the most prepared had all three of those. So they had training, they had a peer they could turn to for support and then maybe a mentor, teacher, either in or outside of their building that could help supply knowledge and, and expertise.
Before you go on, can I just ask, when we talk about training, is it training in the subject area or training on AP, like as a program? Does that make sense?
So predominantly, I'm talking about AP as a program specific to a curricular area. So usually when you go to a college board training, you will be focused on a specific subject that you'll, that you will be teaching.
Okay, thank you.
This gives you an idea of just a breakdown of our experience level of the teachers who participated in the response. So there was an average of almost 18 years of teaching experience and then an average of eight and a half years of teaching AP-specific coursework. It has two main tracks. One is the Advanced Placement International Diploma, which is also a college board distinction that students can complete. And then there's some additional requirements for students if they are going to complete the full APPX portion of APID. And then we also have the Advanced Placement Distinguished Scholars where students kind of concentrate on particular AP curricula following one of these four academic tracks. Since fall of 2013, we've had approximately 431 students that have participated in the program at some point during their high school career. So, and we didn't have enough consistent data for me to provide a full breakdown on that, but that could be that they participated for a month, it could be that they participated until they graduated. So there's some variation there. And we have had 21 graduates from the program. One of the things the students do in addition to their AP coursework is they also do a service learning project and a research project, which as of last year was combined with the AP Capstone Two Core Series that has been launched by the college boards that walks students through the academic research process with going through IRB approval, et cetera. So this provides you SAT scores of APPX participants, which in the broader report you can see there's, as we would hope from the number of AP courses that these students are taking, is a higher average than our broader SEPS population and then our graduates from the APPX, you see an even higher average. Taking a look at our demographics and participation there. Again, like we've seen in some of these first programs so far, we can definitely use some work on access. We, last year, our high school population was approximately 53% white, 20% black or African-American and 17% Hispanic. What we see in the count of AP tests taken by different demographic groups is 12,937 AP tests taken for whites, which is approximately 6.7 times the number taken by those who identify as black or African-American and 6.8 times the number taken by Hispanics. So in taking a look at recommendations for the division, I'm just going to hit a couple broad areas. Like everything we're taking a look at, we're recommending setting division goals for the program so that we have more direction in terms of where we want to go. In terms of APPX, when we took a look at our completion rate, it's, it's unknown at this time if this is, you know, a time or resource issue, but if we continue to go forward with this program, it's something that we need to take a look at, making sure that more students are, are getting through that. And providing division support for AP teachers and coordinators in terms of training, coordination of data as we're collecting it at the front end and continuing to share it to make sure that, that data is clear and consistent. One, one area that I neglected to mention was the expansion of, of AP when we had the NIMZI grant a few years ago, the National Math and Science Initiative. We had a three-year grant within the division that provided support for our teachers, a number of our teachers who had gone through training had gone through under that grant. And you, you also saw during, during that time period, some increase in students from free and reduced meal population participating, our Hispanic population participating. So continuing to look at additional grant opportunities that would allow us to focus on expanding access and offsetting the cost of the programs and providing support for our teachers. And then consideration of other areas that affect access in terms of, you know, as, as we talked about with IB, examining some of our weighted credit policies, study halls and how we vertically align pre-K through 12, which I know LOD is currently working on with the curriculum framework, so, but those are questions.
Before I go to questions, I'd like to really thank you for delivering this tonight and not delivering the video. So, Jamie, what you have to look forward to. So any questions, comments?
Thank you again for a good report. No, that was good. One question that I had was about the NIMZI, because remember we did the, it's called, was called VAS? NIMZI, VAS and it was, you know.
Furtenership between VAS and NIMZI.
And it was good because it was, you know, it was kind of like everyone, we were pushing students to AP. I mean, we were pushing them hard, if you remember on the board, if you were on the board back then. We're kind of cutting out DE programs and we were pushing them into, into AP. And so you probably will see a spike in that. And even, but even though the kids, you know, a lot of colleges won't take, and that was something that, another question is, is the next step here to, so what, you know? So I got the report, so is CGS helping our kids get into college? Is IB helping our kids get into college? Is AP classes, the rigor of AP classes helping our kids get into college or, or what? So I think that's a question that I have. And yeah, so that, so that whole rigor portion of the AP exam, yes, and I asked the same question three years ago when we were in the, in the, in the NIMZI program. You know, AP for everyone, is that right? Is that right putting a child into AP class that is clearly moves at 100 miles an hour and they, they fall behind? Well, so the answer was, some people said, "No, that's probably not right because then the teacher's going to go as slow as the slowest kid in the class." the teacher's gonna go as slow as the slowest kid in the class, which I get it. On the other hand, it kind of pushes the kids to excel, so they may only get a two on the exam, but at least they have the rigor of that class. So, you know, that's, those are some of the discussion points that I came across. We will take these costs, and I'm gonna extricate the costs out from all the programs, and I'm gonna do my own kind of magic for the board and then give it back to you. And then we'll, and then we'll talk about that kind of stuff, about the money that we're spending on stuff. But the other thing was, and I told Ms. Cale, I'm diming her out, so I just wanna go back to the CGS report, you know, on the ex sum, you had, you didn't have a qualifying statement about the...
I'm gonna add it.
Okay, got it. But, you know, another good report, this is a great starting point, I think, for our classes, and you're asking good questions here. You know, and I think, I think we have some more, not you, but I think we as a collective have some more, we have to sit down in a room now and kind of say, okay, what are we, what's our next step? So what? What do we want to do now? And are the kids benefiting from it? You know, so we have a parent and a guardian survey, and this is the same thing about other classes. Do we have a survey that can reach out to the kids that are already in school? Hey, yeah, I'm in Yale, and I went to, I was an IB student. And I got into IB because I was a Mountain View, whatever that is, right? You notice I didn't use CGS, which everyone thinks I'm gonna use, right? So anyway, yep, thanks.
This question is for the board. Are we gonna be talking about this at our planning meeting in January? Is this, are we, is this gonna be a topic of discussion? Is, were we adding this?
I think it will be. I think there's a, there's an issue with the dates in January that I think when the board convenes in January, we'll have to set those dates, because there were two dates put in January, and more than fifty percent of people can't come on one or two of the dates. And I'm not, we need to do it when we can all be together. And I think until, and we have two new board members coming, I think we need to really mesh our schedules. That's just my personal, but the plan was, was, this is part of what we have as one of the superintendent's priorities and goals for the year. Now, if we don't do anything with it, I don't think we can penalize the superintendent, because I think, I have to say, these are some in-depth, well-researched reports. So now it's on us of what we need to do.
And that's what I was thinking, Ms. Egan, it was, at a board meeting soon to the future, we take these three reports and we kind of pick out kind of an outline of where we want to, what do we want to focus on? What are those things we want to focus on?
I think it's sort of something, this would just be my personal thought, probably not before a board meeting night, I think it's a separate day.
It's a work session stuff. This is work session stuff.
Probably not even a work session that hits a seven o'clock meeting, because I think this is...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because there are, there are things that I would like to, nothing that anybody here wants to listen to, but to talk about with this, you know, and it kind of goes in conjunction with the committee that we're gonna be talking about tonight.
Well, there's a whole weighted credit, and, but we need to really, we need to really look into that kind of stuff.
Right, okay, as long as we're gonna have that conversation, we won't talk about it now.
But if there are any areas of something that you think that you would like, as you can see Rebecca may or may not be standing with us in a meeting in three to four weeks or six weeks. So I'm trying to, so if you have something burning that you are, want additional, I would say perhaps put that email out sooner rather than later.
Well, I think mine is more funding-oriented.
Okay.
So that would be a conversation for us to have, we'll talk about budget, so.
And I will also try and prepare kind of a summary across all three of them before I disappear for a few weeks.
Ms. Ealing, sorry.
You know, I think these numbers on the back page, the overview and findings, the demographics are extremely eye-opening with respect to the diversity. They don't match up. You know, they, who's taking the tests and who's getting that passing score? Now, you know, I, we're having a discussion about whether you even need to take the test, and I have my feelings on that, because I think if you get out of the course, what you need to get out of the course. You know, if you pass the test or take it, that's a bonus. But these are telling, and I think we're gonna need to look at that, and it's not just here, but in, you know, the enrollment in the, in the other programs. But, but in this, this testing, I would expect that to be more across the board. And I'm just doing the, you know, the math pretty quickly, but it looks like about two-thirds are passing, but then, in certain groups, and then less than half in other groups. So it's, and this is not for you, but I think this is an area that we need to focus on, you know, as a school division. If we are truly aiming to serve all students, then, you know, something is not working right, you know, here.
And just to point a privilege, it goes back to what this board has discussed earlier about, you know, you don't make an IB student, a diploma IB student in ninth grade. You make that, you make, you identify that student and you make them an IB student, a CGS student, an AP student, a successful student with great grades in first, second grade, third grade.
But again, I don't think we've ever seen this kind of data before, so I really appreciate the amount of work I know that has gone into this. I know this was combing through a lot of stuff. I think one thing I am seeming to hear in general from board members is, the only piece, which please note, this is not something that you can do, but I think I heard Mr. McCosker and I think others would agree, is how do we track after we leave high school? What are our students doing? Where are they going? How can we get better as a school division doing that as well? Would be something I think, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out.
And that's something that I'd really like to delve into as we get into these comprehensive evaluations, is making sure we are longitudinally tracking our students. There are in conversations with some of our other colleagues in other divisions that are doing the same kind of work, there are some, there's a Virginia longitudinal database that's being put together by a research team up in Alexandria. There might be some opportunities for us to do some follow-up work, but again, it is a much more, it's not a three-month turnaround kind of thing. So I think there's some opportunities there for us to do some longitudinal data tracking, but it's just gonna be a building step.
Well, as you all have presented us some great stuff, some of, when you do, when you do this, you also find, wow, it'd be great to know that data point. And so then we, we as a division figure out how maybe that's one area, not a whole, but one that would be great to understand, at least from what I think I'm hearing also from board members. Thank you so much, thank you for staying tonight. And that, board members, any other, sorry, I'm kind of done. Okay. Moving on, I believe we'll have Mr. Adumbreck come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Benson. This evening, I'm going to be giving an update, excuse me, on two of the updated account policies that were put into place at the beginning of this year. So those policies were on our account debt and our modified meals. And just to kind of go back a little bit, the previous policies that were in place regarding account debt, students were allowed to charge a meal to their account if they had insufficient funds. Elementary students could charge three days' worth of meals, middle and high schools two days' worth to their accounts. Students could not charge our al card items to their accounts, and once an account went negative, the student was made aware and the parent guardian was contacted, either by automatic call system, email, what have you. In terms of modified meals, when a charge limit had been reached on a student's account, they were offered a modified meal, and that meal consisted of a cheese sandwich, piece of fruit, and a milk. Every student with insufficient funds was offered a modified lunch. They did have the option to refuse this lunch. While every attempt was made to provide this meal without creating an awkward situation for the student, it does remain difficult for everyone involved, especially my folks, they're probably the ones that are most uncomfortable with it. The original meal is saved when possible items such as milk and other packaged items can be used again. Single-serve items such as slices of pizza, sides of hot vegetables cannot be returned to the line for sale. Currently, this school year, we updated both of those policies at the request of the board. In terms of modified meals, effectively what we did was eliminate the cheese sandwich. So students receive a standard lunch meal regardless of financial situation. Parents are contacted directly if their student has exceeded the credit limit and has reached the situation where they would be receiving a modified meal. In terms of account debt, credit is being extended to students in order to allow parents time to replenish account. This opportunity to credit will be extended for the entire school year. In previous school years, our charging and credit window ended in May. And this gave us an opportunity to try to recoup some of our negative debt before the end of the school year, when we had to go ahead and cover whatever leftover amount was left for the state of Virginia. So financial impact, these numbers are through November thirty-one for last fiscal year and this fiscal year. So the credit extended amount is basically the amount that we've extended in credit, and then the repaid is obviously what we recouped of that credit. So as you can see through the sixteen-seventeen school year, at this point in time, we were right around ninety-three hundred dollars in debt. And currently, at this point in time in the school year, we're almost twenty-eight thousand dollars in debt. Obviously bigger numbers. So thoughts on that? Based on current figures, financial liability on the district is more than tripled due to uncollected debt. At the current rate, we would stand to accrue around ninety thousand dollars in unpaid debt by the end of the school year if we did not end the credit limit and we continued as we were going. We would need additional funding from the district in order to cover that. I don't have ninety thousand dollars in surplus, as much as I wish I did. I do not unfortunately. These figures will continue to be monitored on a monthly basis to analyze any additional financial shortfalls. Really, the cheese sandwich, as awkward and unfortunate as it is, was motivation for parents to pay back their debt. And every parent that we are reaching out to now that is accruing debt and not paying it back is effectively telling us, my student's still getting a hot meal, why am I going to pay back the money? We've involved counselors at schools, principals at schools, to try to get them to reach out to the parents to see if we can get a little bit more help on that end. And a lot of the principals and counselors have been great and have made phone calls on our behalf and reached out to parents that are having these issues. We've sent out a lot of additional free and reduced lunch applications this year and really tried to ramp up our efforts, but I think really at the end of the day, the motivation to pay back the debt has effectively been taken away. And parents are aware now that regardless of situation, financial stability, what have you, their student is gonna continue to eat, which is obviously a great thing, but it does put us at a substantially higher financial liability than we've been in the past years. I'd be happy to answer any questions, comments, concerns.
Madam Chair. How long does the, does the courtesy go on for? Is it...
Currently, there is no, there is no end to it. The modified meal was effectively the courtesy at the, where we ended it last year. So once they got to two to three days of uncollected debt, we would offer them the cheese sandwich in order not to continue to go down the rabbit hole of continuing to feed them and accruing the debt.
Have we looked at any other ramifications for not paying that debt? Like not releasing grades, or at the end of the year, if you don't pay it back, you don't get your diploma, or something along those lines? Have we looked at any other...
Those are certainly options. And from my end, that's certainly not something that I can put into place in terms of report cards or whatnot. There are things that we can do with that. One of the options that some school districts do is they carry debt. Stafford County has a division, before my time, Mr. Sly, had made the decision that we would clear off negative debt at the end of the year for all students.
Right.
And that's something that we've been able to financially support in previous years. And that's a pretty, pretty good thing that we're doing that a lot of districts don't. Many will carry it to the end. And what you'll see is a lot of seniors that owe thirty cents on graduation day and are knocking on the Office of Nutrition the day of graduation so they can get their diploma.
What if, what if there's, a month goes by, let's say you've got somebody who gets paid once a month. We give them a month of free meals without replenishing, and then after that month is up, that's it, we go back to the cheese sandwich?
And that's certainly something that, you know, is...
Taking advantage of it.
As uncomfortable as it does make us, unfortunately, that is one thing that dish, kind of statewide, we see is a motivating factor. I will say, our constituencies are not doing policies as this. Falkir actually just instituted one in the middle of September based on our program. They saw, the school board saw what we were doing, their school board told, basically approached their nutrition director and said, hey, you're doing this come second week of September. So they reached out to me to try to get some ideas on some of the things that they could do, and I spoke with them a little bit. After a month and a half, they're running into the same problem. She has accrued almost fifteen thousand dollars in debt in a month and a half, where their total last year was three thousand dollars.
So a question for our Fab Chair, where does this money come from at the end of the year when they've got to clear out the debt?
What do I care? In previous years, we financially supported that ourselves.
I'm sorry?
In previous years, we financially supported that ourselves.
We just said you cared, and you're gonna continue to care, Mr. Hirons. Come on, come on, give us an answer.
You're still on the clock.
No, I, if I didn't take the mic now, or floor. I thought when Berkeley did present this, when we talked about it, on other things that we, motivators to get the debt paid include holding grades, holding diplomas, where are we with that? Dr. Benson, are we taking any action or taking any look at our policies on being able to do that? Berkeley's right, you know, he controls food, he doesn't control those other items.
Not, Mr. Hirons. I, and I would caution the board to identify a consequence that is, that is tied to academic achievement and reporting to parents. I think that could put us in a difficult situation moving, moving forward.
What about something along the lines of participation in extracurricular activities?
I think the, the one issue that I would see from my end would be that up until high school, a lot of the students that we have that are in these situations have absolutely no clue that there are any type of financial situation when it comes to their lunch account, and are completely dumbfounded if they're even approached about it. And, and they feel very uncomfortable about it. And the concern that we've always had, especially for our younger kids, is if we start to, to Dr. Benson's point, either hold report cards, start to preclude them from participating in after-school activities or whatnot, it really is of no factor that they can control. So really, we're somewhat punishing the student for their parents' misgivings, unfortunately. We have some high school students that are eighteen years of age whose parents have called us and said, they're eighteen, they're off my books now. So they, they are completely, you are completely in charge of them, and if they owe you money, please do not call me. So we have, kind of on both ends of the spectrum. So once the parents don't get involved, then we're somewhat punishing the child, which is very much the way people view the cheese sandwich as a punishment. And unfortunately, that's the one thing that we could do that would make parents motivated enough to pick up the phone and ask why their child got a cheese sandwich. So the, the outside things tend to get tricky, and where are you enforcing those and when are you not? And we have some folks whose parents have worked out situations with us. I have a couple moms, I get paid once a month, is there anything I can do? And we try to take care of those folks and kind of increase their amounts a little bit, and they're really good about paying back. I think, you know, the unfortunate thing about this is that ninety percent of our parents and constituents are great and just want to take care of their situation, their students. I've gotten reached out to a lot this year about covering debt at other schools. Recently, we had somebody pay off debt at Brookpoint High School, and I've gotten a lot more communication about that this year. So we have a lot of amazing folks around here. Unfortunately, we just have a small percentage of folks that are somewhat taking advantage of, of the generosity.
I do care, but I would encourage the board, obviously, I've got no additional influence after tonight, but I would encourage the board to, don't give up on it. Keep looking for solutions to be able to, to make sure, again, that kids have a good meal. You know, keep working at it this year. At the end of this year, ninety thousand dollar, you know, debt for the year isn't something that can be able, you know, isn't gonna stop the school system in its tracks. So try to keep working through it this year and find some solutions that work.
I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Benson, would you also caution the board against carrying the debt, as you mentioned, you know, the seniors kind of knocking on the door for, to get their diplomas for this?
I think if the board wants to continue to explore this as a pilot, that we're gonna need some commitment to make up that difference at some point in the, in the future, because we do not... not believe that school nutrition will be able to absorb-
And they shouldn't.
-those losses.
Right, yeah. I mean, I'm all about natural consequences, and I don't see where, you know, holding grades is linked to the lunch accounts. But at the same time, I'm also all about people not taking advantage of-
Right.
-we're struggling to find money in various places for things that are very important, not-
Absolutely.
And at the same time, it's a tough situation, because I'm also pretty passionate about kids having proper nutrition and not eating cheese sandwiches. So yeah, we're definitely going to have to seriously put some consideration into this. Anything you have to recommend further would be-
And carrying the credit is certainly an option. What I would tell you is that it does increase the workload in the office quite a bit, because effectively, every year when we clear the accounts, we start fresh from an accounting perspective. It's going to be a lot to account for that, because if we have a kindergartner that comes in, realistically, he could carry debt up until he's a senior.
He'll never be able to-
Until graduation. So that's 13 years of accounting that we're now doing for one person.
I just, I want to add one more thing. I know it's been a long week. I'm just so disappointed to hear that this is being taken advantage of, because I was so proud when I picked up my nephew, who is eight, you know, and he said, oh, I got a notification that I was under $2 in my life. He didn't have enough money for lunch, and I, you know, I said, so what happened? And then he got a hot lunch, and I was just so proud to know that my sister would pay, you know, later, maybe she's one of the ones that didn't.
And I would say the vast majority of the folks are. I mean, I could probably tell you 15 families off the top of my head that I know we have issues with, because I've called all of them directly and reached out. And like I said, a lot of the principals and guidance counselors have also reached out on our behalf. A lot of times, I feel like they're screening my phone calls. They hear school nutrition director, and immediately, it's going to get deleted real quick, and I'm not calling him back. So we've definitely explored some avenues, but it seems we have the same habitual offenders.
I'll call my sister.
Berkeley, have you all looked deeper down into where, is the problem more with high school kids, is it middle school? I mean, to me, there's a difference between a seventh grader-
More so elementary and middle school kids. We don't see it as much at the high school level.
I mean, these kids are junior, you're driving themselves to school. They can pay their own lunch.
We don't see it a lot at our high schools, more so at the elementary and middle schools.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Healy.
I appreciate this report, because I was one of the ones that asked for, you know, an interim report. I'm not as optimistic as a lot of us, and, you know, I had my concerns that we would be taken advantage of, and it sounds like, you know, we have been. But I would like to get not a list of the students, but a list of the numbers by school. Because, you know, I think we can all look at our individual schools. I know the PTOs, PTA's, you know, really picked up a lot of that debt in the past, and that may be one thing that we're missing here that we didn't have in the past, because if they knew somebody was getting a cheese sandwich, they would, you know, foot the bill.
Right.
But I think we're going to have to look seriously at putting some brakes on here. Maybe, you know, having a month or some period of time, a grace period, but we cannot say you can come in in September and have a free lunch all year, because that's not fair to anybody. And these people that aren't paying are people that don't qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Correct.
I mean, Lord knows, we do what we can to get anybody that qualifies into that program so they not only get lunch, they get breakfast.
And it's better for us, too.
Yeah, I know, we make money, actually.
But that's the first question we ask when we call a parent, is have you applied for free and reduced lunch, and can we send you an application? And a lot of them have not. And we have some that will apply and are denied based on their income, and from that point in time, they continue to eat free. I know one student in particular has purchased two lunches this year and has eaten 47 for free. I talked to his, one of his cafeteria workers today. I've talked to mom, principals talked to mom, guidance counselors talked to mom. She's not interested. She very well said, effectively told me, he ate cheese sandwiches before and he liked those, and now he gets a hot lunch. I would say that is definitely the minority, small minority, but they're there.
Well, this isn't a reflection on you, but I think we, as a board, need to deal with this, and we probably need to deal with this before the next semester starts, which would be the end of January, to at least, you know, come up with something that puts some brakes on here. I mean, we don't want to penalize the students, but-
Right.
-it's not fair to the school system. And I am not at all supporting taking anything away, grades, diplomas, anything like that. I mean, I'd go back to the cheese sandwiches before, you know, I would talk about penalizing a student, because I agree with you, this is on the parents, except the ones that are over 18 and they're legally adults.
Can we add this to our conversation next month?
Sure. I think it'll be on an agenda or a work session item. I would, I wanted to make my comments. I know I was part of the ones that asked you to come back.
Yes, ma'am.
I know. So thank you for coming back and giving us some time to wrestle with this before the next semester begins. I do, I think it would be great, this is a time of year, we have had, you know, very generous people come forward.
Yes, we have, extremely.
Not that I'm trying to say that we want to publicize it, I think we also would like to show that we are getting our handle on it, but letting our community know, you know, sort of what happened. And if there are people who want to come forward, like I said, I saw the post by Mrs. Houck about Brookpoint, the anonymous family came in and paid those lunch accounts-
They did.
-which was phenomenal.
It was extremely generous, yes, ma'am.
But I'm not sure I want to always rely on that. Obviously, I'm closer where Ms. Healy is. I think I would actually look to you to say, you know, a month. I would look, I think we would look to sort of your idea, looking at the trend, what do you think makes sense? And I'm not asking for it tonight.
Right.
I want to think about it.
I mean, you know, I will certainly think about it. At some point in time, we need to have some type of realistic cap, some type of situation in which we can cut off reasonably while still taking care of the student. But there, we have to have some type of motivation in there to make a parent act, because right now, we don't. And to Ms. Healy's point, it's not our free and reduced kids. Our free and reduced kids are taken care of. It's our paid students that we have the issues with.
So perhaps for a work session item to discuss sort of strategies?
Yeah, no, I would just, just real quick, I apologize, I should have talked- Yeah, and my guidance would be to you just to come back to us with what we've discussed, basically something that, you know, hey, how do you take care of those folks that are doing the right thing?
Yep.
However, we're taking care of our kids-
Yep.
-that are doing the right thing, and they're, maybe it's even a tough time during, I mean, come back with a reasonable policy, but then, you know, there has to be a, has to be a kind of a cutoff after, hey, I can't, even if the parent calls and says, hey, I'm having a hard time for the next couple of weeks. I mean, that's different.
Right.
I think that's something that we can take care of.
Correct.
But not, hey, I'm just going to not talk to you, and my kid's going to eat free-
And any of the folks that reach out to us with special, any type of special occurrences-
Yeah.
-we work with. It's the folks that don't communicate that-
That's the tough part, is crafting a policy that takes into account all that stuff.
Right.
And I know you can do it, so.
Yes, sir, we'll figure it out.
What would be helpful is, like you said, sort of the gravity of, I mean, I know you're giving us the broad, but saying, you know, we're talking about 100 families or five families or something.
Absolutely.
That gives me sort of an idea of how we can also potentially tailor and deal with this, because I do think we're trying to do the right thing with our heart and the right place.
I would agree.
However, we also have to be very cognizant of, you know-
The bottom line.
I don't want to run, I don't want you to have to come beg to us for money that you don't have to.
I don't want to either. It's nice when I can support myself, and I don't have to ask any of y'all.
But again, I appreciate you coming back like we had asked.
Not a problem.
I know, it was something I hounded, so thank you for coming back and staying this evening with us.
Of course.
And we will see you in January.
Madam Chair, and perhaps we could ask Dr. Benson to have staff, Mr., whoever you want to involve, come back to us with some options for consideration, to put on for information on our first agenda in January, then if we wanted to, you know, have a discussion or we'd be in a position where we could take some action to begin this next semester if we chose to. And maybe it'll be a wake-up, maybe people will decide to spend some of that Christmas money paying their lunch bills, so.
It would be fine with us. We would allow it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks again. It depends too. All right, our next agenda item is our resource utilization study update. I believe that is going to be Dr. Benson.
It is. Thank you, Madam Chair. We completed the Evergreen Efficiency Study on March 24, 2015, and we had 98 recommendations that were included in that study. Our goal was to address in some manner all of those recommendations in a three-year period. So we're providing the board with an update as to the status of those recommendations. They're organized by Division, Organization, and Management, Instructional Services, Financial Management, Human Resources Management, and Operational Services. Wide variety of recommendations, many of which we have implemented, improved budget planning, restructuring the central office, looking at our compensation models, looking at staffing, establishing staffing standards, and then, you know, funding those during the budget process. There are some that we're wrapping up right now. We have yet to establish a business advisory committee. We have invitations out. We expect to have our first meeting this month with a follow-up after the start of the new year. We've also found in some areas that we didn't capture the efficiencies that we thought we would capture. One of those areas would be grass cutting, and using that as a shared service with local government, we found that to be more expensive than what we were doing previously. So even though, you know, we had the recommendation, as it turns out, it didn't create the efficiencies that we thought it might create. There are other recommendations that, from the get-go, we decided not to move forward with, one of which was reducing the number of planning periods that our teachers at the high school level have. We found that the planning that was available to our teachers was consistent with what you would find in other divisions, and therefore, felt like that was not an area where we felt we could capture some efficiencies. So we've coded what's going on with all of those recommendations. We have an X in there of it was completed, an IP of it's in progress, P of it's planned, and NA of it's not being considered at this time. And I'm just going to leave that with the board. If there are some items in here, some recommendations that you would like to see some additional focus on, then we certainly like to know that, and we'll continue there. But we have pretty much addressed, considered virtually every recommendation that was included in that, in that study.
Dr. Benson? Did the new members get both a hard copy of the Evergreen report and a hard copy of this report?
They have not, I don't believe. The shared services study and the-
I think that'd probably be useful. Both of them have been involved, so they probably have a copy, but I think it'd be important for the school division to make sure they have a copy of both.
I would suggest this could be one of those potentially, the retreat or something items, if somebody has read through these and there's something that, gosh, I want a different one. But if not, then I would just let this go along. I would like to thank Mr. Hirons, I know, the tracking, and that was something I know you pushed very hard for, because we've done studies, it appears in the past, and they sort of go into a drawer. And this makes sure that it doesn't go into a drawer, it goes into somebody's hands to say, does this make sense? Should we do it? And I appreciate the staff's work to implement and decide what we need to do. I would invite the board, if you haven't re-looked at this, there are some that are on the board's agenda, things like that, that can be brought forward, but I think that's just sort of an internal discussion for the board. All right, moving on to citizen comments. All right. So I will go through our, the opening. Speakers this evening shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation. If the spokesperson represents an organization, speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You will see the green light system. It's a little hard to see it, because it's hiding behind that computer screen, but it does go green, yellow, and red. I don't know if we can slide it over or not. I don't know much about it. Nobody wants me to touch the computer, I can tell you that much. But when the yellow light comes on, that means there's one minute remaining. When the red light comes on, that means your three minutes have expired. You get about five seconds to wrap up, and then we will move on to our next speaker. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113. Public complaints, again, it is public comment, and we will not have a dialogue, you will want to use your whole three minutes, and we will be, we are in listening mode. So I have two people who have already signed in, and then after that, I'll make a general invitation to anyone who wants to speak. I have Deborah Conley and Leslie Cook, if you all want to come forward. Love to hear your comments. Thanks for staying this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Benson. My name is Deborah Conley, and I am the chairman of the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee this school year. I just want to take this opportunity to update you guys on several projects that the committee is currently working on this school year. First of all, we sincerely thank you for adding funding to the FY18 budget to cover the district music performance assessment fees. This will take a financial burden off of our families whose students participate in these programs, and it will also allow our music directors to focus solely on their students and their music programs as they prepare for these very important assessments in the spring. Secondly, we have two major projects we are currently working on. As you may remember, we created a student survey in order to gather information from our high school students regarding the accessibility and student interest level in our various high school fine arts programs. Our goal, as always, is to foster maximum participation in our fine arts programs. We hope to discover answers to questions such as what motivates our students to enroll in the fine arts? Are we lacking fine and performing arts courses that our students are interested in taking? And how can we maximize staffing for fine and performing arts courses throughout our Stafford schools? The student survey should be administered to students in January, and we will review the data and share the results with you in our June committee report. We continue to work on collecting information regarding the updating of the high school ed specs, in particular, the fine arts sections, and we plan to do some visits in the school year to more Virginia high schools to observe the fine arts programs, and again, to report to you in our June report. Finally, we want to take this opportunity to respectfully ask you again to consider our proposal of providing co-curricular supplements for all middle school orchestra and theater arts teachers at the middle school level. Currently, only the teachers at the middle school level who receive compensation for their work beyond contract hours are the band and chorus teachers only. Their dedication and hard work to our students of these teachers must be recognized and compensated appropriately. We have provided you with multiple options for improving this situation, and we sincerely hope that you will consider funding these teachers for the upcoming school year. Thank you for your time this evening. The Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee will continue to support our fine arts teachers and students, and will update you again in the spring regarding these projects. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I'm Leslie Cook. I'm at 10 J. Mar Court in Stafford. Thanks so much for having some agenda items tonight that are, I mean, more than just what I'm going to speak about. There's so many important things that were on the agenda items. I feel like I've learned, I've taken a college course on the county. I'm particularly excited about the Superintendent's Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity. That is just a really exciting agenda item to see on the agenda tonight, and we know that these committees and the changes that typically come out of them improve mental health and academic outcomes for students. There's lots of data available for that, and so I'm excited to see that agenda item. I would like to strongly encourage the board, should the measure pass, to specifically include LGBT youth parents and teachers into those committees, because we know that having them specifically included will assure that the issues that they are wrestling with or struggling with are brought to the fore and are addressed appropriately. And that's it, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming and waiting this evening. At this time, if there's anybody else who would like to, who did not sign in, you are welcome to address us this evening, so come on down.
Good evening, members of the school board. I am here to share my concerns this evening regarding the future of Ferry Farm. I no longer have the children there, but I've grown quite fond of my kids' opportunity and time there. In 2008, Dr. Sawyer invited a parent and a principal from each of the elementary schools to participate in a forum. We were not told the point of this conference, but quickly learned that a study had been paid for and done. paid for and done that had the idea that we needed to tear down two of the three Southern End Elementary Schools and rebuild them into 950s, and the third one would remain, quote-unquote, mothballed. In all scenarios, Ferry Farm was coming down. That plane came and went as quick as the wrecking ball of an idea of a plan that it was. In 2009, I joined the CIP with Mrs. Egan as a chairperson, and we were working on the plan for the elementary school renovations for five elementary schools: Falmouth, Grafton, Ferry Farm, Moncur, and Stafford. We were looking for the ideal location to move the students during the renovations. In this process, we learned that the aforementioned order was the plan. Upon further research, we learned it would be cheaper to do sister schools together. Talking with Principal Freeman, he said it would be fine to go last since Ferry Farm had no familial relation with any other elementary school, provided we would be done in five years, 2014, 2015. Our committee also learned that Falmouth had come up for renovation twice before, and right when they were near the end of the year, something came along and derailed those plans. Our committee worked hard to research the cheapest option for reno and best plan for relocation. 2014, 15 has come and gone, and Ferry Farm is no longer, is no closer to getting a renovation or a rebuild in 2718 or in the close foreseeable future. On the Superintendent's Parent Committee, we learned that a study was being paid for and in process to see about ranking our CIP projects. Ferry Farm was ranked high for the school side, but Courthouse ranked higher on the county side. Now, through turn of events, Ferry Farm is being bumped further down the list and maybe even behind Hartwood, who was not even the original five. I have some understanding of the Hartwood dilemmas in county school population numbers. To sweeten the deal, Ferry Farm has been presented with a spreadsheet with renovations out to 2036 to the tune of around 24 million? That's a question mark. I have it. Mr. Freeman was told when we were going to be rebuilt not to ask for big projects. Years have gone by, and Ferry Farm's slide of disrepair continues as we waited our turn for a rebuild. Even the PTA was asked for simple in-the meantime items such as an electronic sign or fundraising stones for out-in-front, as most of the schools have. Nope. Currently, the county has taken care of Falmouth, Grafton, Stafford, and soon enough, Moncur will be done. Ferry Farm was invited, myself included, to the meetings for the elementary school design. More meetings, more hopes, more disappointments. We were part of the original five. Four out of the five have been provided, as promised, to their school communities, except for Ferry Farm. What is the solution? Finish what you started back in 2009, please. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if she could state her name for the record, just, I don't think we got that one.
That's right. We all know Ms. Randall, but formally, for the record, we need to put it there.
Susan Randall, 222 Wood Landing Road.
And sign in.
On your left, oh, no, on my left, your right.
Okay.
Nope, right behind you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Just so I won't scare you. Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane. I wish each of you would speak into the mic so I could hear from the back, so I can sit in the back. My topic is quite obvious. This is the lame duck session of the Stafford County School Board 2017. As you all know, citizens, the board is changing, and the Grinch has different views of what the board should look like. I listened for over two hours, and I think the agenda needs to be changed, and that's why citizens like me don't come here anymore, because I have to wait two hours to use three minutes. You're wasting my time, because every day is Saturday. I am now retired. The 90K, it's pretty simple. You get a 12K, type it in, times seven, that's 84K. I think we can convince the Board of Supervisors to give the other 6K. Nutrition is a key aspect. I used to eat mustard and relish sandwiches. I'm the oldest of six. So, I'm very fond of what should be there. It's very interesting to listen to the programs. If you look at New York State, if you get a Regents diploma, you are probably smarter than not only a fifth grader, but probably 95% of all high school graduates in the United States. Check the college graduation rate of people who got a Regents diploma in New York State. You'd be fascinated by the statistics. That's why Virginia is a Commonwealth. It's not one of, one of the 46 states. It's one of the four Commonwealths where common sense is not common. I still believe that the superintendent is the most qualified to be the chairman, and redistricting will be coming up in 2021, the real redistricting, to take care of this gerrymandered mess that's in this county of 280 square miles. Maybe we should only have four elected school board members, and then we have a chairman. We'd be saving the money. Then maybe we can give some more free lunches. Now, to be a little more sarcastic, I'm not, I'm tired of, there's no separation of church and state. There's a church at North Stafford. We allow our cars at Mountain View and Margaret Bend Elementary, so we're not using school bus utilization to its full aspect. And I do appreciate Mr. Hirons, the class sizes are very important, because two heads are better than one. And finally, as I leave, I am the Grinch. I did bring you a bag of coal, but I am the Grinch. I have to take it to the Board of Supervisors next week.
Mr. Waldowski, did you sign in?
No. I'm retired.
I know.
8 Pickett Lane, Rockville District.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Please come on forward.
Hello, my name is Milton Bratton. I live out of the Wide Water District. One of the questions that was very interesting to listen is, haven't been to one of these in ages. So, every once in a while, you come here, and you learn something new every day. One of the most important things that I saw was the study about the AP classes and stuff like that, and the disparity between the various groups of people that live in here. So, how do we address that? The questions I have is, what's the diversity of the teachers? Who was teaching these classes, and where did they come from? Now, I know that Stafford has enough money to accomplish whatever they want to do if they put their mind to it. It takes a little bit of imagination, researches, and then finding the schools that's going to be able to address the diversity that we need. I think diversity is probably the biggest question, or the answer to a lot of the things that we have. So, next year, what do we do? How do we solve this problem? What do we do when we come back and you guys look at this? How do we find the answer to what you guys came back and found out what you're going to do? Is it a committee? Or do we come back here and say, "Well, we looked at this, and this is what we're going to do"? And how do I do as a citizen that no longer has any kids in the school system, but my taxes are going to this, and I have grandkids that's coming through here? How do I address that? And what do we look for? So, anyway, thank you. Congratulations to you for coming through. I remember you when you was campaigning, walking around there. So, please, if you could, I'll be here next, next time you come here and meet, and probably it's for the next 12, so good to see you guys next year, 2018. Okay, thanks.
Thanks for coming. Don't, sign in on the clipboard on the left. Oh, okay. Thank you. Left, my left. All right. Moving on to our board member committee reports. I think we should be probably pretty short and sweet, but any real comments? Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, did you say committee reports? Well, let me turn my microphone on, in case there's anyone sitting in the back. I just had a couple of things to... So, the Special Education Advisory Committee met on November 20th, and I just kind of wanted to recognize them. They do a great job getting the word out to families about services available in our schools, as well as the community, and not only getting the word out, but, you know, developing and implementing those services to make sure that our kids are taken care of. We do, we are looking for some additional voices, as I understand, for the committee. So, if you have any interest or think that you could serve well on that committee, please don't hesitate to reach out to myself, send me an email, I'll pass it on to the appropriate people. Their next meeting is on January 22nd at 6 o'clock, and then I just wanted to make a quick remark about the Joint CIP Committee. We met several times over the last month or two, but we did meet on November 20th and again on December 6th, and I just wanted to kind of remark on this process. It's been eye-opening for me. It's the first year that it has been put together, and I was kind of, started with the process in the other joint committee that I was sitting on, developing, you know, who was going to do this rubric. And anyways, the point is that I, I've just been impressed with how well the staff and the members from both sides have been able to sit together and discuss some really challenging issues and compromise, and just be respectful and open. I've just, it's gone a lot more smoothly than I had anticipated, and I wanted to note that.
Quick follow-up from CIP. We have a, the 7-on-7 is next Tuesday, correct? Is it 5 o'clock start? No, exactly. Regardless, I would encourage...
It's either 5 or 5:30, sir.
I think they're, I think they're serving us dinner, too.
5 o'clock, because it's between their meetings.
Yep. To all the board members, I encourage you, make sure you have the material that we received tonight, the new program capacity information. I think, I don't know if information has been sent out by the meeting, but I assume the information items for the, that particular meeting will probably be sent out by the county administrator staff sometime later this week. We need to be prepared and ready for that. There's not a heck of a lot of necessary battles going on, but one of the issues that the Board of Supervisors is wrestling with is the build of the courthouse, whether a new courthouse, whether it's in phases, and what the effect of that is on the timing of us being able to rebuild, I'm sorry, being able to build the high school six and possibly rebuild and renovate Ferry Farm. I know Duane's on top of that. So, be prepared.
All right. Any other on the board? Okay.
Quickly, I stopped in to a gifted meeting. Thank you so much for hosting it, and a wonderful group of folks. I just remind the board, once again, just to circle back on my comments and your comments about diversity and inclusion and making sure the kids are identified. We still are three FTEs, if we remember, three FTEs short from the gifted teachers in the elementary schools that are sharing. And so, you know, a big part of, hopefully, a big part of this diversity and inclusion identification is, remember, I spoke earlier, you can't, you can't make a, you can't make a, you can't start making a straight A student in ninth grade. That's not how it works. So, we need to start and identify them in elementary school, and so I just want to bring that thought back to the board for those FTEs, to make sure that we have our gifted folks that are identifying children at the elementary school level, that are full-time doing that. They can just do so much more. I had a teacher talk to me about the difference between a full-time teacher at the elementary school in the gifted meeting, or it comes to, I see a kid once a week, or I see a kid five times a week, and that's a lot. That is a lot of instructional time to be pulled out of a classroom and worked with. So, leave that with you. I've also, as a member of the finance and budget, yes, we're going to, please pull that paperwork for the CIP, look at all the stuff ranked, and we're going to be discussing it on the 7-on-7, as Mr. Hirons and the rest of you talked about, and so you'll hear more from me at that meeting as well. Thanks.
Madam Chair?
I just want to state real quick, we're having some issues with being able to fully staff with volunteers the CIP Advisory Committee, so much so that we haven't yet had even one meeting. It's still an important group. We're still looking at utilizing that group to, you know, make recommendations to us on specific CIP projects and the needs of the county as far as capital projects go. So, if anybody out there is listening, paying attention, and you want a volunteer opportunity, CIP Advisory Group is a great group. I thought it was the most exciting out of all of them, which is why I served on it for five years and with Mrs. Randall. So, you know, we need your help. I don't want to see it disbanded. We need parent volunteers to be involved in this, to, you need to be the voices of the community. So, anybody wants to, you know, sign up for it, the application's on our website, or you can email, email me, and I'll get you the application. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. Do we have any updates? Is the three-on-three still happening anymore? Does that, have you guys met?
We have not met, and because there was so many scheduling conflicts with campaigning and everything else, we punted it until after the first of the year, when they have their new members, we have our new members, and we can start fresh. So, we are going to reconvene.
All right, good. Didn't go away. Next, board member, hopefully somewhat brief comments. Ms. Egan, you want to start?
I'm just going to keep it really brief and say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and I hope you have a wonderful break, and we'll see you back fresh at the beginning of the school year.
Ms. Egan?
New year.
Ditto to what Ms. Egan said. Happy holidays, and once again, thank you to the librarians for these cookies. They are certainly something to look forward to.
Mr. McCosker?
Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and have a happy new year, and thank you to librarians for my favorite bucks of cookies. And once again, you know, to the teachers that are at the tip of the spear and the staff, you guys work really, really, really hard, and I should say, you folks work really hard for it to be inclusive, since we're talking about that. Just keep up the good work. There's a lot of stuff coming down the pike January. We're going to hit the ground running with our two new board members, and we're going to have a lot of fun.
Ms. DeCater?
Congratulations to North Stafford High School on their ribbon cutting yesterday. 9,500 square feet of amazing, amazing, state-of-the-art space for those kids to learn and grow and excel. I'm really, really excited to see that. There's even a little, like, first-class airplane vestibule that you can sit in, and I learned that there's a daycare at North Stafford yesterday, so I may see you very often with, between the vestibule and the daycare. That sounds awesome. So, congratulations on that, such a success. I don't want to put on the back burner that there is still some space that needs to be completed there, so I just want to remind my fellow members and those that'll be joining me soon, let's not forget about that. Also, just a, something that I noticed, I like to make sure that we're talking about the positive things that we're seeing as well, and congratulations to, and thank you and job well done to everybody that put together the first-year teacher dinner. That was an amazing experience to be able to go and sit and listen to a panel of old teachers giving the new teachers advice, everything from classroom management to how to file away papers and just stay on top of things. It was just a really, really nice experience for the teachers and for me to see just positive, positive stuff going on. I loved that. Thank you.
So, last week, I was able to go to the winter slash holiday/Christmas concert at, well, it was at Forge, but it was the Ronnie Thompson one, and they were fantastic. And this week, I get to go to the high school one at Forge, which will be fantastic. And, you know, I played sports in high school. I did not do the performing arts. Now, as an adult, I wish I did the performing arts. You can't really carry your sports with you that much, but you can certainly carry music and those types of arts with you. So, I just encourage the board and everyone to just, you know, give these kids some attention. Sports tend to get a lot of attention. That's fine. But, give these, give these kids the attention. We've got some really talented kids here, and I really have grown to appreciate the performing arts, especially the music, and how hard these kids work. So, just want to put that out there, and for my final send-off, Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy Holidays.
Ms. Hirons?
I was at, I'm going to talk about sports.
I figured, somebody was going to do it. I'm like, wait.
Congratulations to the Colonial Forge and Stafford Indians football teams for making a good, strong run into their respective state championship divisions. Both of them... Both of them really got Stafford County excited. Good job to both of them. I did want to, you know, kind of highlight Stafford High, of course, because again, the coach there, Coach Hampton, has really changed the attitude and character of not only the team, but the building as a whole in a very positive way. After the game against Tuscaloosa High School up in Leesburg, in which Tuscaloosa defeated our mighty Indians by three points, they were having their team meetings on the field and the Tuscaloosa, when their students formed a prayer circle and then they walked over and asked for the Stafford Indians football team if they'd like to join. And they did. And there is a great picture of going around Twitter and Facebook of all of the players from both teams jointly on any praying or taking their moment of silence after the game. And afterwards, a student from Stafford High found the student from Tuscaloosa that organized this and he said, you know, "We asked every single team that played us this year to join us." And Stafford Indians were the only ones that joined them there in the, at the end of the game in their prayer circle. I think it says a lot about the character, whether it was for prayer or a moment of silence, it was unity amongst the competitors on the field and sportsmanship that VHSL drives into those student athletes, drives into our coaches. And they really demonstrated the sportsmanship that we expect out of our student athletes here in Stafford County and Virginia as a whole. But that carried on, that was great for the football team, but it carried on into the school atmosphere as well. So again, my hat's off to Principal Lewis and Coach Hampton there for really doing a great job of changing the entire character of that school over the last couple of years. As Chris said, our last hurrah, Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year. And to our two new board members, good luck and have fun. Apparently Duane's going to bring the fun.
My comments, Ms. Decatur hit many of the comments that I had. I have to say, being at the Colonial Forge game and going into double overtime is always tough. For the parents who've reached out to me about VHSL eligibility, I believe that will be being dealt with and I'll leave it at that. But great job by all of our students in all the activities. As a fan of the fine arts who will be running from our meeting next Tuesday, too, a music event. It's a wonderful time to be a part of Stafford County Public Schools. The music today, Hartwood Elementary was here entertaining our central office staff and it's just great to see all the investment and the excitement that's in our classrooms and in our extracurricular activities. A wonderful day with North Stafford in their new learning space. It was such an honor to be there. For the board, for those of us, there's a legislative meeting tomorrow night. Remember, we have our service employee recognition on Thursday. So that's very exciting. And next week we'll be meeting with our Board of Supervisors in a collaborative approach. Maybe we're getting into our five Cs and taking them across the street, because the only way that we're going to make the great investment in our schools is to work collaboratively at identifying the needs. And this Joint CIP process, many of you know I fought very hard for that because I believe we need to identify the needs throughout the county, not pit ourselves against each other, but if we don't honestly know what is needed, great decisions can't be made. And I believe we're moving in that direction. To our new board members, thanks for coming to so many things recently to try and begin drinking from the fire hose before you will be officially drinking from the fire hose. We are ready to welcome you and get involved in all the great things going on. To everybody else, to our, Happy Holidays, Happy 2018, be safe out there. We want to see everybody in the new year. Enjoy, relax, refresh, because we're going to have a great year in 2018. Oh, my gosh. So, Dr. Benson? Top comments?
Just one comment, Madam Chair, thank you. I had the pleasure last night of speaking to, I guess about 80 of our teachers, as we have started some new curriculum work in the division, curriculum framework for the division as a whole. It's a really exciting time. We had some incredible conversations there and I think that we're going to see some great things emerge from the work of those folks. So I appreciate that opportunity.
And I'm just going to take a quick point of privilege. I'd like to call out and thank Lisa Boatright and Dr. Benson for their attendance several weeks ago in October of meeting with the governor about the teaching crisis in Virginia. Some people saw, I believe it even made the Freelance Star, about that the governor has reacted and put some things potentially in the budget going forward. But I'd like to commend them because I know that they work very hard and the Legislative Committee has worked on that issue as well. So thank you for your work there. Let's hope that the powers that be are listening and thank you for going and doing that. So thank you, Dr. Benson and Ms. Boatright. So moving on to our consent items. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any changes, deletions, changes to consent? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All consent items are approved. Moving on to action items. 10.01, this is about the superintendent's recommendations. I hope the board has read the bright yellow. One, there have been several that have been pulled, they are noted in the list, but otherwise we could approve the ones that are, that had basically no changes, things like that.
Madam Chair? Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I mean, just a question. Do we have a projected time when these three that are pulled for further review will be coming back to us?
We'll bring them back to the board at the first meeting in January.
All right. Any other? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 10.02, to approve the creation of a superintendent's Equity, Diversity and Opportunity Committee.
Madam Chair? Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I wouldn't mind taking the first shot for once, since I'm taking the privilege. As many of you know, this was something that we have been bringing forward since August or at least in discussion. I hope the board was able to read the discussions. It does sort of highlight why our Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention is very helpful. It allows you to connect with other colleagues who are also grappling with issues within their division. The attached proposed structure, EDOC, it can become something else, but I think that worked well, is coming based out of some of those conversations with Chesterfield and Henrico and others around the country. But this seemed to have really captured what we would like to do, is to have an overarching committee, then with seven, at least initially, subcommittees to start on some specific areas of interest. Again, this would be a superintendent's, not a board committee. This direction, our charge is to give some start to that committee so we can get out of the gate. I would really like us to consider that, not to say that the structure can't change, but I believe this is a great blueprint for us to get started. Ms. Egan, I know you were second, so I will go to you next for any comment.
If you have any interest in that comment?
I know.
We're really close to 10:00 mark. Let's talk about your comments.
Turn on. Okay. Any other comments?
I mean, I know we're getting close to 10, but my microphone's still on, so I'll use it. I just want to urge the approval of this. I think that equity, diversity and opportunity are fantastic words and I just want to say that I don't love EDOC. I want to just make that note. So anyways, but I do think that this is a great opportunity to work with teachers and community and, you know, parents and students to identify and address and, you know, just close those achievement gaps for every single student. I love it.
Did you hit some of the topics Mr. McCosker identified by you and Ms. Healy about, you know, what we, the information we're learning? So hearing nothing else, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our information items now. The exciting first information item is a utility easement. Ms. Healy, no.
Ms. Healy, fix it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
We have a plat here, but I don't see a deed of dedication or an easement document. Is there not going to be one? Traditionally, there is. Is this a special utility thing that they don't require?
On the particular plat is the information that's usually on the deed as it was explained to me by the county and that's the only documents that are passing to us. If the board wants me to press for something additional, I can certainly do that.
Well, I would suggest that we see if we can get an easement, because an easement grants certain rights and reserves certain rights and now we're just saying we're dedicating it and there's no reservations or anything like that.
Be happy to.
Just ask for the traditional.
Scott, you walked up here with some swagger. Were you just swagging or do you have a boot on or something?
I got a boot on, sir.
Oh, is it a boot? That's what it was. You were kind of, yeah.
I walk up very humble.
Just shoot yourself in the foot, Scott? Kind of like a, kind of like ghosted up usually, you know, you're kind of, you know, but this one was kind of...
All right. Now, next, next is the, I think 11.02, I'm sorry, I've switched to it, about the back of the 2018-19 calendar. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns.
I have a quick question. Just in formatting, the section under, to the far right column, under report cards, it just looks like, I don't know if it may be just becoming a PDF or whatever, but it looks like there's a skipped line and a skipped word. Stafford County is committed to conference with parents at least twice, then there's a blank line, year, in order. I think there's, should be twice a year and I think maybe converting it may have...
Yeah.
... just so it doesn't get sent out that way, just extra eyes on it. Thanks.
I'd like to make a quick comment. I truly appreciate the cultural, the addition of the cultural observances, observances with holiday that are noted on the back of the, or what will be the back of the calendar. Is there any need to move this or can we wait till January? I mean, is there anything controversial about the back of the calendar?
Why don't we put it on the consent agenda and let somebody wants to remove it at the next meeting?
Agreed.
That way we can still have a chance for people to...
That's good. All right. Moving on, this one may generate some discussion, is 11.03 about our high school program of studies, high school course catalog. Are there any questions or concerns? I guess my first question is, just to get us started, Mr. Nichols, this generally goes out to students when? Just from a board deadline perspective. So go in at the...
Program of Studies? We usually have that printed, we go out in the February. This year, we're looking at February 21st for registration nights at our high schools.
Okay. Please know that I'm not trying to stifle discussion, I just wanted to find out what our deadline was, so that was not... Because I know there's several things in here that might have some comments. Any comments?
Yes. Of course there's a comment.
Yes.
So I know there's weighted grades or we're getting rid of weighted grades, I guess. Talk to us about that.
Okay. What I'd like to do, before you always kind of give you an overview of...
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
That's okay. And I will try to be concise. So, good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Benson. I'm representing a really cross-section and a committee. And the committee this year that worked on the program of studies was made up and led and facilitated by Melanie Daniel and our Directors of Counseling in our schools and also Learning and Organizational Development. As you know, we have several new facilitators this year. So Melanie and the counselors, along with Mike Justice, our Health and PE, provided really the foundation for the collaborative work, which included our five high school principals and of course, Tom Nichols and Mrs. Pam Kale. The timeline for our program of studies, we are anxious, usually after the end of the first semester, that program of studies goes up on the website and also goes out to our students and families. So that's early February, generally speaking. So we're here tonight to propose some changes in our program of studies. The process that we went through was over the course of several months, which is pretty typical. This year, we had some pretty significant discussions, which I can go a lot more efficiently tonight because a lot of those discussions were about access and equity. So I'll frame most of these changes around that, okay? At first, first though, when you look at the program of studies, the cover's been redesigned, we reorganized sections, we updated descriptions, learning and organizational development, and really focused on adding skill sets. So we put a lot of emphasis, so when you look at C5W, we started to include in the sequential course descriptions, descriptions of student skills that would be necessary to have a successful experience in some of those sequential or completer courses in CTE. I'm going to first go over the new courses, because you may have some questions about the new courses that are proposed in the high school program of studies. We have with us tonight, they've hung with us for the duration of the meeting, our facilitators who designed those courses along with some of our teachers. So we have Mr. Eric Powell for History and Social Sciences, Mrs. Dinah Robinson, of course, our CTE and our lead facilitator, and Dr. Stephanie Felenger, who also represents several of the specialty high school programs. The first course, the title is Exploring Local History. This course's design is very exciting. The five, the five teachers that are interested in teaching this in all five high schools, along with Mr. Powell, are very interested in having this course represent really the rigor and the engagement that we are aiming for in our strategic plan, along with our student achievement goal. So it's going to be a project-based learning course, if approved by all of you, and it will be focused on our Stafford County local region, okay? We continue with last year's new course in Geospatial Technology I, out of the CTE areas, Geospatial Technology II, and that is the completer course, the state completer course for the Geospatial Technology Series. That is Stafford High School. In all of our high schools is cybersecurity, software operations. This is the CTE completer course for cybersecurity that began last year. That's all high schools. Firefighting, one and two is proposed for this year's high school program of studies. I want to take some time to kind of go over this because it does, along with approving this, it's important for the board to understand that there is a budget tied to this, okay? So between the school division and also our folks across the street, the total cost of the firefighting program is $245,168. Of that, for Stafford County Public Schools, we have a commitment of $122,584. Within that, Mrs. Robinson believes that our Perkins grant can underwrite that $122,584 estimate by anywhere between $30,000 and $40,000 for non-consumables equipment that is needed for the course, okay? So that isn't confirmed, but we are proposing that. We believe we can do that.
Are uniforms considered non-consumable?
Mrs. Robinson?
Non-consumable.
Okay.
Uniforms.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay. Firefighting one will be taught first semester, firefighting two will be taught in the second And all five high schools, students from all five high schools can participate, are eligible to participate in this program. It does include, from what I... It does include, from what I have learned, the transportation to the fire station number two.
Jan, before you jump ahead on that one, obviously, you just talked about the budget. And so, that's gonna require the Board to approve the budget with this in it for, in order for stay as an offering. Now, I understand it's gonna be published or it's, right now, being proposed to be published within the program of studies and distributed to students, but the budget will not have been passed by that time. Now, there's supposed to be some disclaimer within the program of studies sort of highlighting that. Where is that disclaimer? I'm not seeing it where the, where that class's description is.
We can add that. This is your draft of your program of studies? We can add that if that is the practice that you all, if that's what you'd like, we can certainly add that.
Yeah, because if I was still on the Board, I wouldn't support this most likely for the same reasons I didn't last year. And if four people were to agree with me, like they did last year, that publication's out there, so students, you know, don't even realize that, you know, it was gonna be taken away from them. So, I think it's important to have a disclaimer in there that there's pending school board, Board Supervisors' actions, something along those lines.
You can add that.
Students are fully aware of that. They can sign up for this, but it may not last.
Well, actually, that's something that I think we had a disclaimer for most of these courses because there are a lot of courses that are in this course catalog that are either not offered at all or not offered at some of the schools. So, we need a general disclaimer, and this would be, you know, one of them. Maybe more important because it's new.
This is an addition, an additional class. And you're right about, you know, the popularity or, you know, filling a class and it might not be, you know, having enough students, et cetera. Or, obviously, you know, the budget, you could make changes to anything within the budget that could move. But I think this one most certainly needs to be highlighted because it's an addition to the school board budget, and I think it's important. You know, again, I wouldn't support it for the same reasons I did last year. I don't think we, the school division needs to be adding programs right now until we really get that budget where it needs to be.
Okay, so...
Real quick, though, on that, how much is the Board of Supervisors kicking in a little bit with us? I didn't, I didn't read it fully. Is it still gonna be, is it still 230,000?
Total, the total amount for the program proposed is 245,168. So, it's approximately one half.
Oh, our portion is 230,000 or the whole? So, we would be one...
Our portion is 122,584.
With the potential for grant money.
With the potential of underwriting approximately anywhere between 30,000 and 40,000 of that from Perkins. So, we could bring that under 100.
Yeah, so anyway, no, I mean, and last year, I know, Mr. Hironz is correct, that it kinda came to us right, right, right in the budget season, if we remember. And it was no, there's no guarantee that the Board of Supervisors were gonna pay half. But, you know, I'll tell you, after speaking with a few fire chiefs and the local White Oak Department, I'll tell you, there's a lot of empty seats in the, in these volunteer fire departments in our county. And they're hurting for recruitment. And I don't have the numbers at my hands, but, you know, I see this as, and I do, I do empathize, but $140,000 for volunteer firemen and even our full-time firemen, if they can make it, you know, they make it, wanna make it a career. I think, I think that this is, this is a worthwhile class for our county. There's a lot of kids that, you know, don't go off and move out of, you know, my dad was one of them. My dad was 30 years in the fire department in New York. And so, you know, and I grew up in the firehouse, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to learn and become part of the community and give back to the community. So, you know, I do appreciate the funding and the fiscal aspect that Mr. Hironz brought up. However, after, between, between that last discussion we had last year and this year, I did talk to a couple of, like I said, of folks, and they've kinda swayed me on this issue. So, anyway, thanks.
There has been organized conversation around this. Mr. Nichols and Mrs. Robinson have been involved in that. I'm certain that you are aware of that. And what I can do, just to follow up on something Mrs. Healy said about, we do, already do have disclaimers. They are in the draft, but not related to a pending board approval related to budget. So, I will make, I will certainly make that recommendation so that that is in the program of studies, okay?
Ms. DeCater, you had a question?
Really quickly, was this, was this an item that we were concerned about the potential that it would be more expensive in years to come? Or was that kind of a set amount?
I'm gonna defer to Mrs. Robinson.
One year from 70,000 to...
Well, I know. So, we had talked about this. There, I feel like I remember additional things coming up in year two and three and so on.
I don't have that information.
Okay, that's okay. Just curious. But someone does.
Yeah. Good evening. At this time, the concern for future years will just be probably about increasing costs whether it's uniforms, whether it's staffing, whatever the existing costs are right now. They could increase over the coming years, but there's no additional items being added from year to year. At least, that's my understanding.
And now, one, one cost that did pop up was, I guess, a lot of the consumables in these courses are actually the workbooks, you know, like the CTE workbooks that we spend a lot of money on for our other CTE courses. The workbooks for each student are pretty expensive, and there's only one per student. So, maybe we could even get better at providing some sort of...
Yeah. Well, and they...
Reducing that...
Equipment with them, right? Wasn't that, no? Okay, that's fine. I don't need to talk about that.
My recollection that there really wasn't any, you know, controversy about the, the class itself. It was only whether, you know, we could afford it.
The timing.
And I'm, I'm not sure that, you know, that's not the case with a lot of these things, particularly in CTE where we do have, you know, limited number of students in these classrooms. So, I would suggest we highlight the disclaimer saying that none of these courses, you know, are totally guaranteed to any student because that was the issue that came up. You know, people were saying, "I signed up for these courses and then you didn't even offer them." And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hironz, but I'm not sure that this is any different from, you know, any other course that we, we just, you know, either can't afford or, or don't offer, you know, at a time.
So, we did highlight that and bulleted it this year, we're going to add to it budget, a budget contingency. So, we, we don't offer courses if we don't have instructors for them or enrollment is low. We'll add to that a budget contingency so that we would be covered, okay?
I think one thing that the Board talked about going forward, as, as has been presented tonight, it sounds like supposedly that the Board is willing, the Board of Supervisors is willing to go half and half. I, I'm going to just put my comments out to the Board before I'm willing to jump fully into this, perhaps an MOU of some, or some kind of understanding with the county because I would hate to offer, not offer, offer, not, and do something like that if we're going to...and I'm not putting this on staff. I think this is actually a board responsibility through three-on-three or talking with fellow board members. But I don't think any of us want to get in here, and it's 245 this year, but, oh, by the way, oh, we're not putting in any year. And then, the egg ends up being on our face of not offering it. So, that's just my comment.
And no, no, and I think, just very quickly, and I think that MOU is a smart thing to do, and not just for the finances, but this is a course that will be in their facilities, their fire, their firehouse, their, their, you know, instructional folks from there, you know, so. Just MOU makes sense to me.
Can we get back to the program of studies since it's now almost 10 o'clock?
Sure. Consistency across what we were putting in the program of studies in terms of prerequisite requirements was something that the committee really focused on this year. So, the proposed successful completion for this year's program, or, sorry, 1819 program of, proposed program of studies is a grade of C, score of 70 or better. And second bullet, we, we also did not make that change to certain programs and certain courses, okay? So, for example, in IB, we left those prerequisites the same. So, this is mainly for those, those courses that are outside special programs like CGS If you could just take a look very quickly at the chart that's in front of you. This is another proposal in the program of studies that generated quite a bit of conversation around equity and around access. And Dr. Towery's presentation on AP tonight and some of the disparity that you were looking at in that data also is something that I'm not going to, for the sake of time, mention, but it was something that was part of the discussion also. These are our comparable school divisions. And if you were to look at this, for example, weighted credit is given in several circumstances without the requirement to take the AP exam. So, this is weighted credit and as it relates to advanced placement. And also, in the fourth column is who pays for the AP exam. Currently, if we were to add Stafford to this chart, we would have to add two lines. One line for governor school students because they are given weighted credit without the requirement to take the AP exam. And for non-governor school students, they are given the weighted credit when they take the AP exam. So, that has been a very confusing practice in Stafford County Public Schools. There was a lot of discussion around that. There was also a lot of discussion about, since our Priority 1.1 in our strategic plan is looking at increasing access to rigorous and engaging horses, the idea that students pay for the AP exams, there's, we don't have all the data yet, but there's a lot of discussion around is the fact that students and their families, caregivers have to pay for the AP exam, possibly eliminating some students from taking AP courses. Consensus was reached on the committee and along with our five high school principals to propose a change that is in your draft for your program of studies. Just have you read, read that. So, we are proposing that students will receive weighted credit for the successful completion of an AP course. This also is one of the recommendations that came out this evening in Dr. Towery's report on AP.
Is, did you find that the governor school, just all the kids in governor school or upperoners of them, just, eh, I'm gonna take the AP course, but I'm just not gonna take the exam? Is that what you found?
No, I'll share that in a minute. I'll just go quickly over these other...
And then, the other question is, if you back up one slide. So, when you were talking about access and equity, are you primarily talking about who pays for the AP exam?
I think, well, I, no. What we're talking about is if you take a look, for example, just go down to Chesterfield, okay?
Yep.
They give weighted credit. They require that weighted credit if the AP exam is taken. So, that's, that's required, and the student pays for that exam, okay? So, when you look at, we're not looking at equity and access here necessarily. However, if you look at a situation in Prince William, they give weighted credit, they highly encourage taking the AP exam, the county pays for the exam. That scenario versus the one that you might see up in the Chesterfield scenario could be, and discussion around it, although there's, there's discussion in a, in a theory that that may be preventing some of our more economically challenged families because of the number of AP courses some of these kids take. If you know you can't pay for the AP test, students might be discouraged to even take the AP course.
So, making it a requirement is actually detrimental? That's what you're saying?
Yes. Possibly detrimental to...
Economically disadvantaged kids and parents, right?
Absolutely. And we have some data. We're still looking at that data. The other piece is, most of our school divisions, if you look at that, they're not requiring the AP exam in the scenario where the student or the family is paying for the AP exam.
Okay. So, I get that point. So, now, let's go back to the CGS comment that you made, that you brought that out as a sequitur. So, what, so what was that? What's your point with that? Just that the CGS is doing something different or...
CGS has a different practice than non-CGS students when it comes to receiving weighted credit for taking an AP course. They don't have to take the AP exam. Now, the question came up with the committee, well, will our AP tests, the number of AP tests, go down? And so, we looked at, well, do CGS students who don't, who aren't required to take the AP test, how many of them take the AP test?
Right.
Most of the students take the AP test.
I'm saying, the CGS is, that's probably not your, that's not your focus group you wanna work with. Who's gonna take? I guess that's my point.
So, if I, if I go forward to the second bullet, that we're proposing that all students enrolled in AP courses will be required, we're not gonna require them to take the AP assessment to receive weighted credit, but we would require them, if they're not going to take the AP assessment, to take a final end-of-course exam.
But we still have the issue of the finances.
A final Stafford County end-of-course designed exam would not cost them any money.
Cost anything.
Okay.
Does the exam affect the grade at all that's weighted? So, if this one student decides to take the AP exam, the other one doesn't, is the weighted grade of that course affected by the difference in disparity in the exam? I assume one's easier than the other.
I, I don't...
We haven't designed the course yet. This is proposed. I'm talking about a Stafford and final end-of-year course.
Would the Stafford end exam be the same...
Rigor?
Rigor as the AP exam? Or are we talking more of a general course exam?
That would be the intent. Yeah, that would be the intent of it, okay? So, your first question was related to, does the AP test, is that accumulative or is that just a summative separate score? That AP test, that AP test has a lot to do with, you receive a one through a five score. And students are motivated to take that, so are their families because they could be exempt, depending on the university they go to, from a course in that university or college.
Right.
Okay?
Ms. Healy?
Wanted to make a point, and I think you stated it, but it's not on the screen. On page 12, after this, this statement, "All students enrolled in AP courses will be required to take a final end-of-course exam," it says, "Students may elect to take the College Board's AP course assessment in lieu of the final high school exam." So, they don't have to take both.
Correct. So, I couldn't fit it all in one slide.
Oh, it's on the next one. Okay, I didn't...
I didn't jump in.
So, this is very important. So, the committee really wanted the, some sort of final assessment. If the students are not going to take the AP test, there would be a final assessment. However, if they opt to take the AP assessment, they would not have to take that final Stafford end-of-course exam. So, what we're looking at is part of our strategic plan, when we think about increasing rigor in the course experience and tying the end-of-course experience, if you're not gonna take an AP exam, therefore, you don't have to pay for the AP exam, to a complete, a complete unit with a Stafford final exam. But they would be exempt from that exam if they do opt to take the AP assessment. In other words, we're encouraging taking the AP assessment. But you would get weighted grade with successful completion of the course.
In the final exam scenario, where they opted not to take the AP exam, it would factor in their final score for the class, correct?
Yes.
But if they took the AP exam, that would not, that doesn't factor into their final score.
Dr. Felenger?
Yeah, that's the trick, that's, I guess, that's the trick. That's spot on, Scott.
So, it's still, yes, you know, it still creates this little bit of, of access because at this point, you're, you're encouraging folks to take the, the AP exam, but those who can't afford it, where they're gonna opt to take the final course exam...
afford it, where they're going to opt to take the final course exam, Stafford exam, and they might not do well on it. And then, is there any potential there, or something to think about in the committee of that causing certain groups to have lower scores of, of AP class work, or AP classes as a whole?
I'm sure that the committee would take that into consider, consideration with, with the Stafford design final course, if this is approved.
And then, is, does this apply to all students, CGS, IB, I'm sorry, I forget, IB? CGS and regular AP students?
No, no. In fact, I mean, yes, it would. Yes, it would. CGS students are exempt from taking the AP exam. Most of those students take the AP exam anyway. So yes, it would apply to everybody. We're trying to, to make sure that we streamline and we have a consistent practice for all of our high school students taking AP courses.
Yeah, I mean, so just Scott, I mean, that's, just thinking about it, I guess I just wouldn't, I would want to, I would want to discourage the, well, I'm going to take the, I'm going to, I'm not going to take the AP exam, I'm going to take the final course and get an A, and so that can get weighted into my grade for class point, you know, for, for, for class standing. Why am I going to, why am I going to bother taking the AP exam when I can get another free grade? So I guess what I would, I guess what I would think about is, how do we, how do we make it so that the student is not penalized for, and that, make sure it's not an either-or?
Yeah, does the student have the option?
Yeah, you know, we got to think about it as an either-or, because what you would want, in a perfect world, what you would want is, hey, teacher, I'm going to take the final exam and do really well on it, and oh, by the way, I'm going to pay for my AP exam. However, it is good that we're, for the equity, now I understand the equity, I get it, it is good that we have that, you don't have to take the AP exam, just take the final exam, and you're still going to get a, a grade, and you're going to get credit for the course weighted, I get it. I'm sorry, it's taking long, and we're asking questions about this, but that's the, that's the problem with when we do three hours of stuff, and then we talk about something really important. It is what it is, you know, so.
So you have the opportunity between this meeting and the next meeting to ask learning and organizational development, you can email me or any of the members of learning, learning and organizational development, and for that matter, Melanie Daniel, who's overseeing our counselors, with some questions. However, Dr. Felenger, when it comes to AP and weighted credit, we've been doing a lot of digging into this topic, because I know the, the hour is late. The other piece that I want to leave you with regarding AP courses, it's the idea that we're, we are broadening access not to necessarily, although it is weighted credit, think of rigorous learning experiences and the course, the experience of an AP course. Because that's really what we're working towards with our C5W skills, with our engagement skills and our rigor. And what we're trying to do is increase that opportunity for students who otherwise may turn away an AP course because of that AP test and the fees associated with it.
Right. Because the rigor, and, you know, back to that, giving a, giving a, giving a survey to the, I mean, I think when we, when we bring this forward, we're going to talk to counselors at colleges, I hope, that, I hope Melanie's talking with them now.
Absolutely.
Saying, yeah, say, hey, listen, so what's better? An AP course? Yeah, well, of course, the rigor is going to help you get into college. If you're going to take a normal course, or you're going to take an IB and an AP, that rigor is going to help you get in. And that's the kind of, I think those are the types of data that we need to come back with to say, yeah, that, this is a fact. We've, we've spoken with 45 colleges, and 30, 39 of them say, hey, listen, yes, that's, that's an important, that's important. We're going to, we're going to count that student's transcript over this student's transcript without the AP or the IB in it. I mean, and if that's, if that's not true, then that's not true. But if it's true, then that's what, that's what we need to be working towards.
Yes, that's what our counselors are reporting, reporting to us. The other piece that I'll leave you with to contemplate, reflect, and think about over the holidays, we are committed in learning and organizational development, because we realize that this is, this would be a change. There are several changes in the program of studies, so I encourage you to really look at it and ask us questions between now and the next board meeting, because we do have a, a trajectory and a timeline we have to meet, so that our parents and our students can get the program of studies and work with our counselors and have those conversations. We are committed in learning and organizational development to work with our AP teachers, to work closely with our counselors, to make sure we're communicating this to our families.
So, Madam Chair, when is this coming up for approval?
I would assume it will come on the next January.
It could be.
But that's why I initially asked what the timing was, that we still have maybe one or two meetings, which many times with the course of studies, we tend to take a meeting or two to get through.
For the high school program of studies, I would think that it's not a traditional info-action item, especially over, over the holidays. I don't think that's fair.
I think we can bring this back at the next meeting, and if you want to, we could start a work session before the next meeting starts to continue the discussion.
Over the holidays?
No, before the next, the meeting, that we're going to be voting on this at the next meeting, but.
Well, I'm saying, why are we, why are we voting out on the next meeting? Why can't it be the second meeting in January?
She has a timeline.
Well, I don't think there are really too many questions, but if a lot of questions come up, then we can always put it, we can defer it. But traditionally, they like to get this done in the fall, and it's already sliding over to.
Okay.
Winter.
We'll give it the once-over, and we'll chat it up next meeting on, on the dais.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. 11.03, I believe this is, this is about right? Or 11.04, sorry. Conversion, I'm sorry, I must have said the wrong thing, this is about right.
Good evening, or shall I say good night? Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Benson, this is a request that we ask be moved to action. We have three elementary contingency positions that were approved in August, but a need has arisen in the areas of autism and ED at the elementary schools. So we're asking that those three FTEs be taken, and one converted to an elementary autism teacher, one converted to an elementary ED teacher, and then the, and the last FTE be converted to three paraprofessional positions. And on top of that, there would be an additional three paraprofessionals asked for. And that's because each of the classes would need three paras to support them once the classes are fully filled with, with students. We would only hire the paras as we need them. So it would depend upon the numbers of students that are in the class. And Wendy is available for any background information that you may need with regards to identification of the students.
I would just like to ask if, will this keep us in compliance to do this? Okay, that's, can I figure?
Is 19 the right amount? Is that, is it three new FTEs? Three new FTEs? Is it three?
Well, it's converting three.
Just, oh, so it's.
It's three, we approved, we approved three for, these are three deaf teachers that they're converting to special ed.
Oh, you mean $19,000?
Yeah.
That, that's because we're asking for three additional paraprofessionals, and it's only half the year.
Six months, you got it, or whatever, five months, time, got it, okay, that's why.
So it is a net increase of five FTEs to the budget.
I mean, I thought that might be it, but, all right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move this to action, please.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. This will be voting to move 11.04 to action. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Healy, do your follow-on motion.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve 11.04.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please hire and get us in compliance. Our next, the next regular meeting of the school board will be on January 9th. The Legislative Committee will see you tomorrow night, Thursday night for our service employee, and next Tuesday night, we'll see people for the seven-on-seven, or whatever we would love to call that, on the joint CIP. We have a read into closed session, I tried to pull it up.
Stafford County School Board, as convene to close, whoops, that's coming now, that's coming now.
See, I've got it right here.
Oh, sorry. Which was I?
Hey, look, I know the language well enough to get three words in. Yep, go ahead. Pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene to close, meaning to discuss or consider three specific personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and discuss or consider two legal matters pursuant to the legal exemption at Section 2.23711A17 of the Code of Virginia.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in closed session.